I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven oh six P M. Board members in attendance tonight are Alicia Hayes, Gordon Wafer, Judy Newman, Kirti Asijah Kaufman, Michelle Shu, and myself, Maya Rabasa. Please join Superintendent Dai in the flag suite. Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalafuea people. In the treaties of eighteen fifty-one and eighteen fifty-four to eighteen fifty-five, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalafuea were moved to the Grand Ronn Reservation and some were moved to the Sylle's Reservation. It is important to note that all of Lane County was and continues to be an important trading and gathering area for canvas and other resources. During the restoration era from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen eighty-nine, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederate tribes of Kus, Lower Unkwat, and Sayusla Indians, the Confederate tribes of Grand Ronn Indians, the Confederate tribes of Sylle's Indians, the Koke Well Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Unkwat Indians. Eugene School District Four J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. With that, we begin our meeting. First up on the agenda is an agenda review. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda anyone would like to request? Gordon?
Thank you. I'd like to add an item for action to adopt the board goals that were discussed in that work session earlier tonight.
Are there any objections to adding the board goals that were discussed in our workshop session tonight? Because I can't see everybody on the screen. If you could speak up and articulate an objection if you have one. Okay, so added without objection. Are there any other changes, corrections, additions to the agenda anyone would like to request? Okay. With that, we move on to introduction of guests and the superintendent's report. Superintendent Dai, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, board, those in the audience and those in the listening audience. My comments this evening are going to focus on gratitude. First, I'd like to acknowledge an integral part of our district operations that rarely make the headlines or get a great deal of acknowledgement throughout the year: our inclement weather driving team. Yesterday, our schools navigated both the schedule change of a delayed start and the extra energy that comes with the Valentine's holiday. However, before students or staff crossed the threshold to their school, our inclement weather team had already been up for hours. Some got out on the roads to evaluate safety before four A M. This dedicated team of facilities, transportation, and operation staff was out assessing travel conditions in a really geographic need first district like ours. Together, they traversed hundreds of miles reviewing road conditions and weather pattern predictions to make a recommendation on the safety of our students, staff, and families in their morning commute. Then they worked the regularly scheduled day. The recommendations these hardworking individuals make are really heavy. They understand the real impacts of the lives of students, staff, and families when changes to schedules are made, but they're also acutely aware of our commitment to the safety and well-being of the district. While our community is keenly aware of their work when decisions are made, and often, many do not agree with that outcome, what many may not know is the number of times this team hits the roads isn't immediately visible. No news means no change to the David Gertie of the majority of those in our system, but they're still out there just the same. For those reasons, I'd like to express my gratitude to the inclement weather drive team for their dedication and their work to ensure the safety and well-being of our district community. Additionally, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a set of individuals who many believe are magicians for the number of things that they juggle at any given time: the office staff in our schools. Visit any building on any day and you'll see these special people warmly welcoming visitors, answering phones, attending to student needs, preparing materials for classrooms, parent-teacher organizations, and the like. With all of the moving pieces that occur throughout the school, these front-office individuals are the expert conductors, the central nervous system, and the heartbeat of our buildings. Yesterday, our leadership team, with the assistance of the behavior support specialists, delivered a small token of our gratitude for the monumental task they accomplish daily. This evening, I would like to publicly thank them again for their work in keeping our buildings humming. I'd also like to express my thanks to our district community as a whole. Recently, in alignment with our commitment to meaningful engagement, we shared a draft version of a calendar that included proposed changes to the start of the school year and the flow of the year more generally. We asked for input from those directly impacted to help guide a quality decision, and our community shared. More than seven hundred comments were received with varied input on the proposal, some in support of, some against. That critical feedback informed a revised draft. They were now asking for additional comments in response to the updates. Our community's willingness to thoughtfully engage in dialogue is central to our mission of making quality decisions as a district. They may not always be popular, and routinely, we may not always have consensus, but when meaningful engagement and feedback occurs, we know that decisions we make or the recommendations we bring to this board have been thoroughly vetted and are thoughtfully prepared. With that, I thank the members of the board for your support of this district's efforts. When you, as elected officials, work together in support of our students and schools, the outcomes are so much greater than they otherwise would be. The same goes for all of us here in the room and everyone listening. Only with the support of the community can we truly achieve the outcomes we wish to be held accountable for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Dai. Next on the agenda is receiving reports from high school student representatives. Looking around, looking if anyone has their hand raised. Welcome to all the students tonight. I'm happy to call if any. Oh, Parker's jumping in. Go ahead, Parker.
Um, hi, I'm Parker Anderson. I'm the student representative for North Eugene High School. Last week, some of our affinity groups put on a affinity group Valentine's Day dance that went very well. I think it was very much enjoyed by all those who participated. And then last week, our incredible librarian and their team put up some new coot's posters around our school which better communicate to the students all the medical help availabilities we have at our school and can hopefully draw more attention to those to better provide support to any students who may want it.
Thanks, Parker. Who wants to go next? Chaz?
Hello, my name is Chaz. I'm Sheldon, high school student representative. This week, our Black Student Union created and is hosting a Spirit Week celebrated Black History Month. They're also planning a lunch celebration for the twenty-second to continue honoring Black history. Sheldon's National Honor Society sponsored Sheldon's first blood drive since COVID earlier today, and it was a huge success. There has been chatter among our students concerned with possible changes to our honors program with the adoption of a new schedule next year and how that will look and impact our honors students. Uh, no. Sorry. Students have been asking for a larger effort into increasing the knowledge of available resources in our schools, ranging from mental health resources and college and career preparation resources. Our A S B is planning on creating videos promoting our school's resources to show in an upcoming advisory. Students have also been curious about the possibility of implementing a hybrid approach in the U P review sessions for our two trimester A P classes. This will help increase accessibility to the U P review for students with demanding schedules who may not be able to attend a morning review session. Students greatly enjoyed the opportunity to serenade their Valentine's yesterday with Sheldon's choir ballogram sales, which are a huge success and super fun for our choir to put on. As for something a bit more seriously, Tom, students and staff have begun to lose faith in the board, in the school board after the disrespect to our girls volleyball team last board meeting. I hope the board makes clear efforts to regain this trust more in the future. Finally, students were extremely grateful for the extra time yesterday thanks to the two-hour delay. It was a much appreciated change to their days, and I personally greatly enjoyed having the extra time that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chaz. And I see you're flinched by your fellow Sheldon representatives. Welcome to both of you as well. Who would like to go next? Oh, I see Jasmine has her hand raised on the screen.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Jasmine Armani, and I'm the student representative for the South Eugene High School. Last week, or this week, student government held a week-long Valentine's fundraiser where students could send a valogram to their secret admirer or friends. And then today, we had a M L K assembly where a lot of, a bunch of affinity groups came and talked about the work of Dr. Martin Luther King. And also, this assembly was in honor of Black History Month. Aside from this fundraiser that student government held this week, I wanted to talk a little bit about mental health resources and the accessibility of them, as well as other issues concerning five oh four plans. Like I've mentioned in a previous report, it is so wonderful to see the increase of mental health resources available at South Eugene. However, I know too many students who are still not aware of these resources, and I've been made aware of that through my participation in different clubs and town hall meetings. I believe making students aware of these mental health resources should be embedded in a student's attendance at school. Student suicide rates have gone up these past two years. I've noticed that mental health resources are definitely communicated through announcements, teachers, and counselors. However, making students aware about these resources needs to happen before a student feels like they need to take their own life. I'm not saying that a student's mental health is entirely on a school's hands, but I believe that we can help prevent the increase in suicide rates within students if we're more communicative about what resources are available. Additionally, I wanted to bring awareness to the lack of acknowledgement and dismissal that many teachers have regarding students' five oh four plans. When a teacher believes that a student doesn't deserve accommodation according to their five oh four, it is extremely invalidating of a student's mental health, and invalidating anybody's mental health is something nobody should go through. And I've also been made aware of teachers fearing that a student is abusing their five oh four. But the question is, like, what profile does a student have to fit in order to, in order for the teacher to think a student deserves to use their five oh four? I think the biggest problem about mental health is that people do not realize when someone's mental health is not, it's not always going to be visible to the eye. And our biases of a student or anyone, or assumptions based on appearance should not be a reason to determine anybody's or a student's mental health. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Who would like to go next? Adapthing?
Hi, my name is Svetravinsy Smalu, and I'm from Churchill High School. On Saturday was our winter formal, and it was a success. Yesterday, our school experienced a Valentine, a singing Valentine. People choose music for someone special to them. Our A S B leadership put on a Spirit Week this week. And next week, our B S U is going to have a Black Excellence along with a Spirit Week for the seniors. Senior night is really kicking in. They're trying their best to stay engaged with their school. Yesterday was our boys' basketball senior night, and it was a good game for them.
Thank you, Svetravinsy. Emily, I think you might be the last one. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, Bren has her hand raised. Thank you, Judy. Bren, and then we'll move on to Emily at the end. I apologize. Adapthing and Bren are together, so Adapthing and Emily are together. So we will wrap things up with you, Bren.
I got responses back for the survey I mentioned last meeting. And the main concern that was stated is that making friends is hard when going to school online. So I think a way to fix this would be to do something similar to the legislative breakfast and set up some days where students can all meet and chat with one another to make some sort of connection. This could be in the afternoon, and we could provide food and drinks. We could also switch up the events and meeting places. Like, for example, we could do a library event, but nothing too noisy, just a calm atmosphere. This would be important in consideration of the many students with anxiety and sensory sensitivity. These events could be once a month or a couple of times a trimester. We could just work from there. I will say that most of the students that responded feel that they are getting enough support from teachers, and next meeting I will have more information on school and district improvements that students want and need most.
Thank you, Ren. With that, we have wrapped up the student representative reports, and we move on to items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at board@fourj.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has thirty seconds left and when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, including district staff or board members, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at five four one seven nine zero seven seven zero seven for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Please extend the same courtesy to members of the community. Tonight, we have seven speakers signed up to speak, and I will pass it off to Debbie to introduce our speakers.
Thank you, Chila Vasa. Our first two speakers will start with Justin Michael McCall, followed by Elena Roberts, who will speak along with Ms. Sophie Roberts. So is Justin McCall here? It looks like Mr. McCall's not here, so if Elena Roberts and Sophie Roberts would like to come up to the table.
Thank you. As I was preparing my comments, my daughter jumped up and had wanted to participate also, so. Debbie was very accommodating about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
For those that are watching, we have a parent and a kiddo who are speaking, and we will start the timer after Ms. Sophie Roberts has her chance to share.
I want everybody to be fair in a disrespected way.
My turn. You said I need to do this in a party.
Okay, thank you. I want to say thank you to everyone who's here and especially the students. I think you guys are just incredible. And thank you to everyone who spoke about mental health. I think that's so important, and it's not something that was spoken about when I was a kid in Four J Schools twenty-five years ago. So my name is Elena Roberts, and you just heard. This is my daughter, Sophie. I am here as a graduate of Four J Schools and a mother of a prospective Four J student. But primarily, we are here in solidarity with board member Laurel Overk, who I believe was unfairly singled out at the last meeting in what appears to be a pattern of behavior from my viewings of several of the past board meetings I've watched online. Thank you, Laurel. You are an incredible advocate, and I want to recognize that and say I appreciate you. Our community is better for your passion and commitment to ethics and a high standard for our education board, not the contrary, as many would have us believe. What is more important to any of us than our children? We deserve a school board that strives forward instead of settling for the status quo and that engages one another with respect. I will be emailing my phone notes to the board regarding what I have noticed as far as a pattern of behavior against Laurel. But I do want to note here in the public record that the issues at the last meeting on the first day of Black History Month seemed to me to have stemmed from Gordon's issue about going on the record as a Signal user. Signal, for those of you who don't know, is an app that largely deletes communications between users at a set date and time and which may be in contraversion of the public meetings laws, as Laurel had expressed. That's right. Mike came across to me, a neutral observer, as exasperated with her fellow board members' concerns of discriminatory behavior on behalf of a man who already appears protective of private communications with other board members. In addition to solidarity, I would like to ask that the board add to the agenda or begin at least to contemplate the future addition of these two goals. One, to staff every single school in this district with a minimum of one guidance counselor and/or behavioral health specialist, preferably one of each. And two, that the district embark on a meaningful recruitment effort to staff such positions and all educated relation, related positions throughout the schools with diverse candidates. The families that comprise the Four J School District and our community at large are becoming more diverse, which is a good thing, and our school staff needs to reflect as much. It's not just Black and biracial children like my daughter who will benefit from Black teachers. It's all children who benefit from new and diverse perspectives. Really, it's all of us. It is a benefit to have this needed diversity and a role model of passion and advocacy on our board. And for that reason, I'd also like to ask that this board put out a resolution to the [BLEEP] in solidarity with Laurel, an amazing advocate and super-involved member of the board for whom we should all be so thankful, but who has instead been singled out and attacked online with violent language. We need to send a message of solidarity in the face of ignorance, racism, and sexism that has now begun to take shape in the form of vicious name-calling. Her actual safety is being compromised, so do something about it, please. Thank you. Say thank you, maybe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts and Ms. Roberts. Thank you, Debbie. Appreciate it. Our next speaker will be Vern Wilson. Dr. Vern, Roscoe Karen, please speak.
Okay, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be able to share with you. I've been a resident of Eugene for thirty-five years while my kids went through Four J Schools, but that's not what I'm here to talk about today. I'd like to share with you a book that was written by a friend of mine that's a professional counselor, specializes in counseling trauma individuals with A D H D and P T S D, and she's a volunteer suicide counselor. And this book is called Handbaiters Fatal Flaw, and I think it's especially important in light of what's been in the news lately from the C D C. I'm sure you've probably heard about what's going on with our teams based on the two thousand and twenty-one survey. It's been on virtually every news station and media outlet. On Monday's USA Today, the headline was teen girls report record levels of violence, sadness, and suicide risk. And just to hit on some of the sidelights, because I don't have time for more, it's according to the survey, fifty-seven percent of high school girls felt persistently sad or hopeless. Twenty-nine percent of boys of high school age reported the same feelings. This means that about forty percent of our teenage students are struggling with serious emotional and mental health issues, but that's the end for a minute. Forty percent of our students are struggling. Dr. Debbie Howery, the agency's chief medical officer and deputy director for programs in science, said, "High school should be a time for trailblazing, not trauma." However, this data shows our kids need far more support to cope and thrive. The survey also found that three percent of girls seriously considered attempting suicide. Eighteen percent experienced sexual violence in the past year, and fourteen percent have had forced, have been forced to have sex. And the numbers are even greater for the L G B Q students. Health officials highlight the urgent need for investment in school programs. As a survey, also found sixty-one percent of high school students felt a sense of school connectedness. Young people are experiencing a level of distress that calls us to act with urgency and compassion to Kathleen Ethea, Director of Adolescence and School Health at C D C. With the right programs and services in place, schools have the unique ability to help our youth. These things are close to my heart. When I was eleven years old, when my uncle started grooming and molesting me, by the time I was sixteen, I was borderline suicidal. The reason I'm here today and talk about it is because I never reached that state of focusedness. There's also a report of a school in New Jersey you probably heard of that took her life about a week ago. Her traumatic event was being beaten in the hallway by four students. I don't have time to go into all of it, but she, the school downplayed the situation, schools now being sued. So why this book? Why now? I believe this book provides a framework for facilitating discussions with crucial subjects, whether it's in classroom one-on-one with a counselor between student and parent. The book deals with a number of timely topics, including sexual harassment, boundary invasions, indecent exposure, cyberbullying, betrayal, rape, suicide, to name a few. It also gives some insight into topics such as shadow-shooting boundaries, having self-respect, the importance of self-talk, having integrity, making wise choices, speaking up, developing healthy relationships in the course of friends, and how to seek help. I've got three copies of the book that I'm going to leave with you. More copies are available on Amazon. And also, finally, if any further assistance, I've got my contact information, and I'm willing to share as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. You can give the books to Debbie, and she'll definitely get them in our hands. I appreciate your generosity with sharing the books with us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roscoe Karen. Is Roscoe here?
Yes, good evening. My name is Roscoe Karen. I'm a retired Four J teacher and a member of Cape. Members of the board, first a sincere thank you to Chair Maya Rabasa for showing great dedication and grace in the past few months as chair. Board members, I'd like to talk with you about easy C B M testing. Trying to find out how many of Four J's progress monitoring tests are required by law has been like trying to catch smoke. Inquiries to Four J and O D administrators yield answers that leave me ever more confused. But in a recent conversation with the executive director of Fair Test, the answer appears to be this: once a year. the answer appears to be this: Once a year, period. Not three times a year, as has been the norm in 4J. Here's the thing. EZCBM does not work. Why do I say that? Let's use other standardized tests as the judge. In the last decade, there's been little change with Smarter Balance test scores or National Assessment of Academic Progress test scores. If EZCBM testing worked, we'd see these other test scores improve. Despite countless hours of testing and countless times when students are pulled out of class for remediation based on their low EZCBM scores, there's little to show for it. Here's the thing. Regularly pulling kids out of class for remediation is a major reason why science, social studies, and art have been pushed to the sidelines. You've got a portion of the class missing on a regular basis. Combine that with the overfocusing on math and reading due to the Smarter Balance tests, and well, it borders on absurd tragedy. It's a soulless punitive system that puts low-income and students of color in an endless loop of test failure, labeling, remediation, followed by more test failure, labeling, and remediation. I ask you, what on earth are we doing? I suggest that 4J take two legislative bills to heart. Representative Nathanson's HB 4124 calls for an audit of local standardized testing. I suggest you ask teachers and students what they think of EZCBM and listen to them. I also suggest taking Senator Frederick's SB 1583 to heart. It calls for the ODE to minimize state standardized testing. Why not meaningfully minimize local testing in 4J also? The standardized testing-centric system is a failure. It's a pseudoscience with quasi-religion dominated by psychometricians as high priests, combined with data crunchers as their paid acolytes. The testing corporations are the deities. Board members, please take to heart the dictum of the Hippocratic oath: First, do no harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Our next speaker is Amanda Fias. And Amanda will be followed by Harry Sanger.
Hello. Thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak. And thank you also for your service, countless hours and like energy and sleepless nightcy stuff. When I come to you tonight as a parent, I have a freshman in South, and I have a eighth grader at Spencer View Middle School. He is having the time of his life. It's a great experience, and they both really like their schools. And I have a third grader that I'm homeschooling at home. Something that's very important to me is us working together and community involvement. So let me know that I'm offering dinner at my house once a month, putting it out there before the board meetings. I had a taker tonight. We had some soup. It was great. But I am putting that one there for like, I mean, I know you guys have a meeting prior to it, but you would be welcome if you didn't have that meeting prior, if you could squeeze out of there. And for any community by myself, I want to just connect. I work within the deaf and hard of hearing community because one of my sons is deaf. And there's a saying that's carrying in multiple communities right now, and it says, "Nothing about us without us." And so my main point coming to you tonight is the hope that we could include and involve and engage more parents so that we can have a more robust community, so that we can really partner on raising our youth together. So I've come up with some ideas on how that might be accomplished and to an even like greater level than we're experiencing right now. So one of them is the ability to continue to talk through difficult things together. It's a challenge for everybody. Like, I feel kind of silly that I would use any of this time to talk about that. But it's a challenge for all of our society to have any conversation where we disagree with one another and our hackles go up, and it is just absolutely miserable trying to talk through difficult conversations and difficult topics. But I really believe in the value of it, and I think that the more efficiently we can speak with one another and hear one another, like hear where we're coming from, listen to understand, the faster we can address all the things that community members are bringing up. You know, like think about how much time, even in my marriage, when you like get into a tussle with like arguing, and it just wastes so much time. And you're like, if we could just hear one another. And what's important, we have a lot of common goals and a lot of common values. Like, every single person does really cares about people, which is why we all show up here. So mutual respect. I also, I really think that our silos are not serving us. And one thing that has created a silo is the lack of opportunity for parents that aren't vaccinated to go into the schools and volunteer. It hurts our students and it hurts our teachers. We need more help in the classes. And it like continues these silos on us not being able to be our own people that made different choices than us, you know? And so, again, we all care about people. We all, like, everybody's making decisions based off of that and some wishing for others. So I would love, I know that you guys say that it's Department of Education that makes that decision, but it's just a guideline. Or as it really is then, maybe we can like work on that. About my three minutes, I'll try to wrap it up. There's no timer going. Okay. Public comment that is sent to the board, I heard that at Apple, they will share it. They'll give like the name of the person and then a synopsis of what they shared. I think parents and community members being able to hear about what other people are saying is of high value and should be a lot more transparent. Similarly, we used to be able to show up and just speak night of. And if there's any ways to implement some piece of that, I think that would really be helpful, especially when I'm trying to invite people to come to my house to eat dinner. I'm luring them in with soup and homemade sourdough. But it would be easier if I didn't also have to say, "Make sure you sign up two days before, because there's this whole work in the world." So if we can have that opportunity, that'd be amazing. And lastly, wrapping up with this, with the board elections coming up, if your seat is not up for grabs and you happen to be promoting other candidates, I would ask that you would please pick people that will listen really well and respect one another and respect those differences, but like listen to understand. Find people that want to search for common goals that are a positive thing to go towards so we can all gather towards positive goals, and then a huge loyalty to the kids. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Karen Sanger.
Those are some tough acts to follow. What a great conference tonight. Good evening, Chair Rabasa, 4J Board Members, Superintendent Di, and Student Representatives. Of course, I believe Black Lives Matter, just like I believe Hispanic Lives Matter, transgender Lives Matter. What I don't believe is that the individual is defined by the group. I don't feel represented by any politician. You know why? Because they're all, maybe this isn't the place for that. But they are supposed to represent we, the people. And that means you, me, everyone. Not we, the this, or we, the that. It means we, the people, all of us, together. It was pointed out to me that my previous comments may have appeared directed at a specific director. Some indeed have, where I attempt to humanize our connection through shared experiences. Others have not. They've been critical of the critical race approach to education that the majority of this board has been supportive of, until you yourselves became labeled as the oppressor. Despite false claims by the media, I have never singled out that director by her race. What I asked is that if I was being tone-policed because of the color of my skin, those who know me know that I am loud and outspoken, and in that moment, I was being tone-policed. While uncouth, this statement was not only twisted out of context by sitting board members and the local media, but also used as an attempt to stifle public discourse. When the origin of this exchange was a petition to the entire board for a score of local families who are being left out of the conversation be able to speak to a contentious issue. This is public participation. This is peaceful. This is how we were told things should be done. Yet, when the rowing crowd participates, we're defamed and vilified. Yes, individuals with CHLs showed up in protest of a CHL ban. Again, this was maybe not the most astute political maneuver, but these aren't politicians, and they had no malintent. These members of our community were nothing but peaceful, using words to petition their government to not act on a controversial issue that was important to them. Lastly, I am aghast at some of the comments I have read online about Director O'Rourke. I lay much of the blame for this at this board's feet. You chose to ignore former Director Walston's initial complaint, multiple complaints by the public since then, employee complaints, and my emails asking you to address this issue where you allowed directors and the public to misrepresent words and actions. We should have a zero-tolerance policy on bullying, but that should apply to bullies you agree with as well as bullies you disagree with. I believe that when parents say they're against CRT, this is what they mean. They envision a world where the founding fathers breathed life into a nation where we could all rise up together. Slavery is an ugly part of our history, but countless lives were lost fighting for a more just and free nation for all, as the founders intended. And this is the message that creates an inclusive education system where all children can succeed. If we want to get to the root of mental health issues, we need to look at divisive messaging designed to create feelings of alienation. If we want children to feel like they belong, we need to start by teaching them that they do all belong to this greater Eugene 4J community, united in our common goals and values. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanger. Our next speaker tonight is Christina Weenie, and she's online.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Weenie. I'm speaking to the board to take all racial harassment complaints seriously and investigate the school district policy required, not to dismiss or to, you know, otherwise disregard them. I want to say that I recognize that the word is very diverse, probably more than it has been before. I thought it was very diverse, but it's more diverse than it has been before. But I want to say that I think it's important for all people to be unconscious and unconscious bias, including anti-Black bias in ourselves.
Christina, I don't know if you can hear me, but we're having a hard time hearing you. It might help if you turn off your camera. We'd love to hear from you. Please disregard the timer and share your statement. It seems like we may have lost Christina in a wirefight kerbuffle. Christina, one of us will reach out to you by email, and we hope you will submit your statement in writing so that we can all have access to it. I'm sorry that we weren't able to hear from you.
And Christina would conclude speakers for this evening.
Hi, Christina. If you'd like to try again, we would welcome that. Maybe turning off your video might make it so that it's easier to hear you because it was a little bit broken up. We were hearing from you before.
I'm trying to get, how to turn off my video. Okay, you got what I said, but my main planes are I urge you board to take all racial harassment complaints seriously and investigate them as required by school district policy. And I want to point out that anti-Black racism is its own kind of discrimination. It can be both. And I hope that other board members will keep in mind go forward. I'm also in support of Laurel O'Rourke and speaking against a petition for her recall and the vitriol that I've seen against her on social media. And then the third thing is that I hope discussion about the use of Signal, not just the legality, but the ethics of the use of Signal, considering that not all board members use the medium. And I also think that not all of the messages on Signal can be served.
Okay, thank you.
I've done speaking, but I'm not really sure. I think my...
If you were all wrapped up, then we want to say thank you. If you're not done, I want to give you that chance to finish.
Okay. Yeah, I've had problems with Zoom before. I don't think my internet is really the best connection service. So yes, I am writing up, and thank you very much for your time.
Christina, while we have you here, if you would submit your statement online by email to us also, that would be super helpful because there was a lot of times when you broke up. And we would love to hear if you'd like to share.
Okay. All right, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone who came and took the time and energy to share with us. I see that Sophie's gone, but please thank her also for coming tonight.
She'll talk about it personally tomorrow.
That's wonderful. Yes. With that, we move on to comments by employee groups. Sabrina, we would love to hear from you.
Thank you, Maya. And thank you, board members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sabrina Gordon, and I'm the president of the Eugene Education Association.
Please turn on your microphone.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a lot of exciting work being done in 4J right now, building toward a better future for our students and the ways in which we meet their needs. Much of this work is in collaboration with EEA and is focused on improving the school experience and outcomes for most, our most vulnerable students. A few examples of this work include creating the details of new high school and middle school schedules, planning professional development, and examining systems of academic and social emotional support. That's not a complete list, but these things alone are a lot. And sometimes, when we focus on the future, it's easy to forget to look around at what is happening in front of us right now. As we plan for the future, students and educators in our schools need the district's attention in some key areas right now. And not just a moment of attention, but consistent attention and support until some learning conditions improve. One area that needs immediate attention is our life skills programs. Months of unfilled positions, sub shortages, and overcrowded classrooms have left some of our most vulnerable students without the full program and inclusion that they deserve, and have left educators feeling overwhelmed and hopeless. Hopelessness drives people to leave the profession, perpetuating the cycle of unfilled positions. These programs need more support right now. That request can be expanded out to all of 4J students when we look around at the current reality of our learning for all effort. The move toward a more inclusive model for all learners is the right move. But it goes beyond the declaration that we are suddenly having an inclusion model. Serving students who have individualized education plans in our general ed classrooms requires a lot of support, more than the district is currently providing. What would support look like? It would look like adequate staffing of educational assistants, time for intentional collaboration between Sped and Gen Ed staff, and smaller class sizes and caseloads so that each student gets the attention they deserve. And lastly, as we plan the details of the future high school schedule, the number-one value shared by EEA and the district is to provide better access and opportunity for students receiving special education and English language learning services. There is no question that this should be our top priority. But we must question ourselves in how we're trying to get there. If we first create the schedule and then figure out how Sped and Yale If we first create the schedule and then figure out how Spen and ELL services fit in, we'll be repeating what has always been done while expecting a different outcome. Instead, we have the opportunity to look at how we're planning the details of the new schedule and intentionally center these students by starting with the voices of Spen case managers and admin. Let's not miss the opportunity that is in front of us right now to do something in a different way as we collaborate toward building a better future for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. I believe you are not hearing from the other two employee groups, so we move on to comments and committee reports by individual board members. Is there someone who would like to go first?
Judy? Good evening, and thank you to all the people from the public who testified tonight. It was some very thoughtful comments. I really appreciate hearing them. And I want to really begin my remarks tonight by expressing my regret and apology to the student athletes who came to be honored at our last board meeting and had to sit through our difficult and unproductive board conversation. I'm truly sorry for diminishing the public recognition and celebration of your accomplishments tonight. Once again, I want to congratulate each of you and your coach on winning the state volleyball championship and acknowledge the hard work it took to achieve this. Further, I want to be clear that I believe that every board member, every member of this board has responsibility for our interactions and dynamics and lack of trust, not just one board member. I sincerely hope each one of us can commit to improving our working relationships so we can actually focus on students and providing them a high quality and meaningful education starting tonight. Recently, I attended the Lang County System of Care Summit. This is switching gears a little bit. The system of care focuses on supporting children and youth who are receiving services and supports from multiple agencies, sectors, and partners. Members include people from Lang County Prevention and Behavioral Health, mental health providers, juvenile justice, Department of Youth Services, K-12 education partners, early learning partners, developmental disability services, child welfare, and then we have voices from the Oregon Family Support Network that bring families to all the meetings, as well as Youth Era that brings youth voices to all discussions. The mission is to work together across sectors to serve and support children and youth in a holistic way. Providers, consumers, and community members can identify and submit system barriers. Anyone that listens tonight can do that. Then the system of care members work together to find solutions. Sometimes this involves finding, combining, or bringing funds. Sometimes it involves getting out of our silos to share information and take responsibility together. Sometimes it involves advocacy for policy changes on a local, state, and/or federal level. The needs of children and youth and families are very complex, interrelated, and coexisting. We experience this in our schools each day, and our sector partners experience this in their work with children and youth. Not one sector, agency, or program can meet all needs, so it's incumbent on us to figure out how to do this together with other community agencies through colocation and blended services. We can't continue to expect children, youth, and families to navigate multiple separate systems and locations on their own, especially during hard times. There's no better place than in our schools to foster these relationships with community partners, to host them and collaborate with them, to bring resources, services, and expertise to our students and our education teams. This isn't a new concept. I know many of us have heard these ideas, and we have several great examples such as 15th Night Health Centers and Connected Lang County. But we have just scratched the surface of possibilities. There are still so many unmet needs and potential benefits to explore. I look forward to continuing these cross-community collaborations, to deepening them, and to expanding them across our systems and schools, and to create new ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Kirby?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? I just have brief remarks tonight. I wanted to express my discondolences to the families of the Michigan State University students who were killed in a gun shooting this week. I get disheartened and discouraged every time one of these are happening, and I think that just that we've taken the time this year to address some of this is encouraging, but also at the same time, just looking at how much further we need to go to make sure that students in all educational settings are protected in a way. I did want also to say thanks to the doctor, I mentioned this earlier, for the team for transportation yesterday and the communication that went out as a parent with young kids in the school. It was right on. I was communicated through Facebook, through my text message, all things. I really appreciate the effort that's gone into making sure that parents are getting communications in a timely manner on inclement weather and other delays. So thank you to the administration and the district for doing those. And the last thing I just wanted to say this week is that our student representatives have talked about the affinity groups, and both of my girls have recently joined a BIPOC affinity group at Adams Elementary. It is new this year, and it's been open to anyone who's interested in joining, and I just really appreciate having a place where they can attend with people from different backgrounds and different cultures and ethnicities and just interest in getting those pieces together and driving a community understanding around some of these different things. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate that there has been actual effort put towards making sure that these groups are available to kids of all ages, and that I'm really looking forward to seeing where those directions go over the next couple of years while they're in elementary school. So thanks, and that's all I have for everyone today.
Thanks, Kirby. Michelle?
Thank you for all the public comments. I would like, Maren, to know specifically that we do have a mental health subcommittee, and I personally will be reading the book that you've shared with us, and it will certainly inform how to move forward with decisions relating to mental health. Thank you. I'm also so happy to see all the student reps who regularly show up. I love hearing your updates and what's happening in your schools. And I did hear when you mentioned that there is, there are new rules for male lead tenants at Churchill and South, and I've looked into it, and there's a lot of research about punitive measures in schools. They often will show short-term positive effect, but in the long term, as with most anything involving attempts to control behavior, those measures like detention and suspension, they almost always negatively affect marginalized students, specifically Black, Latin, Indigenous, disabled, and special needs students. I would suggest reviewing those rules at Southland Churchill and prioritizing student voice and possibly finding some other alternatives. Last Friday, I went to visit Kelly Middle School, and I had the opportunity to see CLAAS training, and it's a dual-language educational framework based on language attainment and development. That's a really short summary. It's much more involved than that. It was great seeing educators interacting in classrooms and then sitting down and analyzing and collaborating to determine school-wide strategies. The dedicated and enthusiastic teachers were energizing. They're so invested in uplifting student learning. I also got to see foot traffic between classes. It's very exciting. It was really important to see and better understand what Kelly requires as a co-located school. They will look, we have a meeting this Friday, and we're going to be working toward feasible options for the operations of that school. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to learning more and hearing what's possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Alicia?
Thanks, Maya. Just want to do a sound check. Can you hear me okay? Thank you very much. So I want to take my time tonight to address what happened at the meeting two weeks ago. I know the meeting was confusing, and I know at times frustrating. I also know that it's hard to understand what was happening, and to that end, I want to call out the article in the February 3 Eugene Weekly. They did an effective job at capturing the nuances of what was happening at that meeting. I believe we can always do a better job at communicating, and I know this board, all of us, we all strive for that, though it might not always look that way. What prompted me to say something tonight is when I started reading people's emails regarding concerns about the meeting. I noticed a theme that was running through a couple of those emails, including one person who wrote, "Despite Laurel O'Rourke's statements alleging racism and unfair treatment of a quote 'black' board member," end quote, "we did not witness any of this to be valid or true." Now, I'm sorry that the team had to wait to receive their accolades, but I am more sorry that we missed the opportunity for our students to talk about microaggressions and the assumptions that we all make. Tonight, I want to share a short video about microaggressions, and I want to thank my faith community for sharing this video with me as it related to that board meeting. Also want to take a second and thank the staff who helped me make the showing this video possible. So hopefully, it will all run smoothly. It is a short video. Thanks. Sorry you guys all wait in silence and wait. So I can't see what's going on. Is there a problem with the video? Small problem, Andy? Got it. If it's going to be longer than a minute, we can go ahead to Gordon and come back, and I will show the video. Oh, there we go.
People who still don't think that microaggressions are a problem.
Oh, you're so well spoken.
Just imagine, instead of being a stupid comment, a microaggression is a mosquito bite.
It's a compliment.
Mosquito bites and their itch are one of nature's most annoying features. But if you're only bitten every once in a while.
No, where are you really from?
Uh, Cleveland.
Sure, it's annoying, but it's not that big a deal. The problem is that some people get bitten by mosquitoes a lot more than other people. I mean, a lot more. Whether it's on a date.
Oh, your English is so good.
Excuse me?
Going grocery shopping.
You know, everything happens for a reason.
I'm just buying apples.
Commuting to work.
So when are you gonna have a baby?
Watching TV.
We have to keep the Redskins name. It's part of our culture and history.
Or just walking down the street with your partner.
I couldn't even tell you were gay.
Mosquitoes seem to pop up everywhere.
Do you know John?
He's so fabulous.
I love Cher too.
And getting bit by mosquitoes every day.
Can I touch your hair?
Multiple times a day.
You're so pretty. Can I touch it, please?
Oh, my God.
Can I?
It's annoying and makes you want to go ballistic on those mosquitoes, which seems like a huge overreaction to people who only get bit every once in a while.
It's just a mosquito bite. Who cares?
Just another angry black woman.
Of course, beyond just being annoying, some mosquitoes carry truly threatening diseases that can mess up your life for years.
Astrophysics?
Hmm, maybe you should try less challenging major.
Ow, what a dream.
And other mosquitoes carry strains that can even kill you.
He looked like he was up to trouble, okay? I felt threatened.
So next time you think someone's overreacting, just remember, some people experience mosquito bites all the time.
You're all so exotic. Wow.
And by mosquito bites, we mean microaggressions.
Thanks for making that happen for me. Each time I watch this video, I'm reminded of my responsibility as a member of dominant culture, not to assume that I understand other people's experiences and that I need to go a little deeper than my initial perception. I'm hoping that we, as a board, can continue to strive for deeper understanding, and we can give each other grace as we work to continue to build a better district for all our students. Thank you very much for letting me speak with you tonight.
Thanks, Alicia.
Thank you. I want to thank the public and student comments, and especially those on mental health, and especially those of Jasmine Darmody on the inappropriateness of students having to face suspicion about the quote, the idea of quote-unquote abusing their 504 accommodations. There should be no place for that in our schools. February is Black History Month, and as somebody who works in the labor movement, it's also Black Labor History Month, and tonight I want to recall one part of that history. The first Black Labor Union Federation was created in 1850 in New York City and grew into a larger labor federation in 1869. The previously all-white National Labor Union had declared its membership open to all workers regardless of race, but in fact, many unions affiliated with the NLU continue to exclude Black workers. In response, a group of Black shipyard workers in Baltimore, Maryland organized the Colored National Labor Union led by Shug Cocker and Isaac Myers. The CNLU organized to approve wages and benefits for its members and to fight against discrimination both from employers and within labor unions. In 1872, Myers stepped down and Frederick Douglass became the CNLU's second president. The things that people organized to fight in 1869 still need fighting, but today's fighters are standing on the shoulders of the people who laid this heroic groundwork over 150 years ago. And anybody interested in this or other parts of Black labor history can find it in many places, including at blackpass.org. I want to call attention and give thanks for one thing that's on our consent agenda, which is the book challenge policy. We've read about places all over the country where librarians and schools are under pressure to ban books for political reasons, and until now, we haven't had a policy, which means each teacher or each librarian or each principal confronts that situation on their own without clear backup of what to do. We now will be adopting, I hope, in our consent agenda, an administrative rule that lays out exactly what's going to happen if something like that happens and creates a review committee constituted of librarians and certified teachers in the appropriate grade and content area as well as others. This was put together primarily through the expertise and work of the 4J librarians. I also want to thank my fellow board member, Michelle Schu, whose leadership, whose expertise as a librarian or really leadership on this issue made it happen, and Superintendent Dyke who took those recommendations and made them into will now be our administrative rule. And I'll be asking at the end of this meeting that we put on the agenda to actually make this a policy in a future meeting so that it's more cemented in. I just want to say a couple of things about the Center for Applied Learning, which I'm looking forward to hearing about more later tonight. This is a critical thing and a central focus of how I think we can improve education over the next few years, even within our budget. A big part of this is CTE, excuse me, and expanding pathways, and we obviously should have much more robust opportunities for students to learn partly on the job through internships and community partnerships, and to learn skills in fields like construction, healthcare, and others where you can get a decently paying job and find family wage jobs without going for college. Part of that means having a central facility so that students are able to access programs that are not at their own home school. That also means we needed to change the high school schedule, and I hope this is and I hope this is part of what the new schedule will make possible, that somebody can go someplace else for a full day a week or a half day a week to access an intensive CTE program. But I also think that we need to use the Center for Applied Learning as a launchpad for a wide range of more creative classes that combine hands-on learning with intellectual learning. My model for this, or one model, is the integrated outdoor program at South Eugene High School that combines physical education with English. I think there is no end of things that we could do if we expand the number of community partners, business partners, working with the U of O. I've spoken about this before, but I want to say again, like where the little familia has a farm right next to Kennedy Middle School, it might as well be 100 miles away in terms of the connection. That's a place where with work, we could be running classes on agriculture and science. We could be running classes on people's foods and history of immigration here. We could be using the U of O labs to do this. We could be running construction classes that combine construction and math or construction and design or construction and homeless policy. In addition to the great work that is now being done in FutureBuild, building homes for unhoused people, we can also have students building accessibility ramps for buildings all around our neighborhood, all around our community that need those to be able to both do good work, see your own work in the community, and learn things in a hands-on way. I think this is a multi-year vision that will take coordination between community partners and teachers. And it can't be signed up just in CTE, but has to be based on building bridges between academic and applied work. And it will take money, especially money, to pay for educators to develop new and engaging classes that I think will not just do the work of preparing people for careers, but just make classes that are more interesting, more engaging, help people's mental health, help build community, and make school less boring. So I'm looking forward to hearing about that. I think it's a multi-year commitment on many of our part and I'm very glad to see this first step. And my very last thing is, I know we're also going to be talking about funding and Student Success Act funding for many reasons that I think are innocent. We've had a weird year, but part of that has meant we haven't had as much input as we need to get about how to spend that money. And I thank the superintendent. I believe that in future meetings, we will be hearing presentations from the EEA, from OSCE, and I hope also from a group of parents who's been working with administrators, parents of students with disabilities, to help us think about what is the smartest way to spend the money that is discretionary this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. I want to echo everyone's appreciation for the student board reps who are here tonight in full force, speaking up and speaking out, in particular about mental health issues. And I want to amplify Gordon's appreciation for Jasmine. You're calling attention to the injustice that is questioning of folks' 504 plans and the legitimacy thereof. I also want to make sure to acknowledge and appreciate Chaz's note that we are compromising the trust of our students in our meetings and their behavior. I hope that we can work to remind that trust. And I appreciate not only your willingness, Chaz, to bring that message to us, but also the willingness of your schoolmates to deliver that message in full force two weeks ago. So thank you to the students for always having the courage and bravery to speak up and share with us, whether it's with their willingness to walk out or their willingness to use their words, a message that is absolutely crucial for us to hear. On Friday, February 3, the first Friday gathering of Communities of Color and Allies Network came together after being put on hold at the start of the pandemic. The February gathering was jointly sponsored by 4J and Bethel and it was truly a joyous event. I would estimate that about 75 people attended, including myself and the board member, Michelle Shu. Along with having the chance to meet new folks and connect with friends and familiar community members, I had the chance to chat with Anil Uman, the director of the School of Teaching and Learning for the Eugene branch of Pacific University. I want to share with you all that Anil has reported that Pacific's evening and weekend teacher training program in Eugene is made up of 52% students of color. When Anil himself went through Pacific's program, he was one of two students of color. What is particularly exciting about this is that Anil attributes this growth in the diversity of students studying to become teachers directly to 4J's Grow Your Own program. This means we have a significant number of teachers on the verge of receiving their licenses, poised to teach in our schools. Diversifying our staff, our teaching staff specifically, has been one of our district's priorities for some time now. And I'm happy to share that our vision with our Grow Your Own program is helping to move us forward. Now, my favorite part of board comments. I am filled with joy to continue spotlighting staff members who are leading their work with their heart. And tonight I share a Churchill High School treasure with you, Jean Chisholm. Jean is the freshman transition specialist at Churchill. Jean goes to the feeder middle schools in the spring to help eighth graders with forecasting. And then when they arrive at Churchill in the fall, he supports them in endless ways, from attending IEP and 504 plan meetings to connecting with families to help ensure students have the support they need to be successful in school. Throughout the year, among many tasks, Jean can be found helping students with academics, helping students navigate mental health challenges, giving pep talks, and, many teens' favorite, sharing snacks. To quote a current 10th grader, "In a very short amount of time, he managed to show me that he cared and that he's there for me. Every time we pass each other, every time we pass each other, we wave and smile at each other, which warms my heart. In a school where most, everyone is strangers, especially last year as a ninth grader, any warmth from a familiar face means the world to me." A colleague notes, "Jean is an amazing and caring educator in person. His care for our youth is evident in all he does. He has an ability to genuinely connect with students. They can see that he cares for them and will work to support them." He goes on to share, "This care extends beyond students to his colleagues. Jean is unstoppable in his work to support staff of color. It seems that Jean knows everyone. He works tirelessly to connect and support staff of color in 4J at all levels, to help us to build community and find ways to thrive here in Eugene. Jean is indeed revered for the care he extends his colleagues. A longtime teacher at Churchill, she shared, "Jean checks on me as an educator of color, like a brother checks on his sister. He understands the weight I carry at the local, state, and national level, and he is always there to cheer me on. He is a great individual and his love for students, staff, and families goes beyond any boundaries. We are blessed to have him at Churchill and he makes our school a better place." A newer addition to the Churchill family also shared with me about Jean's willingness to support her as a staff member. When I first started my role as an equity manager, Jean was a lifeline to me. He took me under his wing to show me around the school and introduced me to key staff members. When I didn't have an office space at Churchill, Jean always welcomed me in his space to have a place to work and meet with students. This is where I saw the magic in Jean. I quickly saw how much staff and students also saw Jean as a lifeline. His space is like a sanctuary and he encourages you to keep it real. My favorite thing about Jean is how quickly he can pull people together to make things happen for our students of color. I've learned a lot from him and enjoyed collaborating with him in his BSU affinity group. Jean strongly values unity among staff and students and has helped our student affinity groups hold collaboration events. We are so lucky to get to have Jean in our district. His colleagues agree that Jean is clearly known as a strong advocate for racial and social justice in our community. He is regarded as being knowledgeable and for understanding the deeper issues. And he can be counted on to help students, staff, and families to navigate through challenging conversations and situations. In closing, I offer you this love note, if you will, written in Jean's name from a former colleague and current Churchill parent. In addition to being a major part of the heart of 4J, Jean Chisholm also could be said to be the connective tissue of Churchill. He is quick to connect with not only struggling students, but with their families and teachers across the school, digging deeper to find out what's going on at home with friends or teachers and making sure they know that there is someone at Churchill that has an eye up for them both in and outside of the classroom. Students are drawn instinctively to Jean's authenticity and humor and his fresh kicks. Jean encourages students to be accountable as the young scholars they are or can be. His colorful welcoming office is a distinctly and deliberately humanizing space, full of snacks, books, posters, original artwork, and even a Muhammad Ali pinball machine, all of which communicates clearly his passion for learning, civic courage, and black excellence. His space is a refuge and touchstone for the many students he uplifts every day in his role as ninth grade transition specialist. I am one of those parents who is called on Jean to check in on, advocate for, some might even use the words lovingly, or ask, my own child to get to class on time. Just as in years past, I could always count on him to look in on certain students who I knew would benefit from his worn demander relational approach. Though I could go on and on about Jean's role in making sure students feel seen and honored, I personally most appreciate Jean for the many ways I see him continuing to skillfully build opportunities for the Churchill community to grow their equity muscles through courageously leaning into discomfort, deepening understanding around the importance of black history, black limitless possibility, black struggle, black lives, and black joy. And for doing his part every day to make sure the Churchill community continues to move forward in ways that affirm belonging for all students, families, and staff. So thank you, Jean. You are a crucial part of the heart of 4J and we are clearly so blessed to have you in our 4J world. From there, we jump into the consent group, items for action. We have five items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion? Actually, before I continue, I just want to take a pause and thank all the board, student board members who are here tonight. And if you are interested in leaving, this is a perfect opportunity to do so and thank you. And if you're staying, we welcome you and appreciate the time that you put in. So back to the consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion? Gordon?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Michelle? Okay, so approval of the consent agenda is moved by Gordon Leifer and seconded by Michelle Shu. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That looks like we have unanimous ayes. With ayes raised, hands raised by Kirti Hasidja Kaufman, Michelle Shu, Maya Rabasa, Gordon Leifer, Alicia Hayes, and Juvie Newman, the motion passes unanimously. Next up on the agenda is items for information. First up is an introduction to the Center for Applied Learning and Community Engagement. And I pass it off to you, Superintendent Di.
Thank you. Speakers, come on. I'll keep my comments brief. I've mentioned this a number of times. It's an exciting thing to discuss. Again, there are a lot of great things happening in our CTE programs in each of our respective schools and then feeder programs. I went out to Madison just recently, I think over the weekend, and happened to see the tiny home that they were building outside of the wood shop and that's fantastic. What we are talking about here that Gordon made reference to is really a center, in the center as close as we can get it to the district, where students regardless of their home school can access the many programs that are available to them. Right now, that can be really, really difficult. There are challenges to make this a possibility, but those are the just type of challenges that we believe that we can overcome. And in addition to CTE, talking about how we might infuse applied learning, as Gordon also mentioned, to academic learning. I'm not going to steal the thunder from the two fault leaders that have worked with me on this most closely over the last few years, Tia Holiday, the College and Career Writers Administrator, and Ed Mendelson, TOSA in support of my creation, Mandy's, and CTE. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks for having us tonight. Superintendent Di, Chairwoman Rabasa, thank you for having us, chairpeople, thank you. And Chairperson Leifer, thank you for your comments in advance for the Center for Applied Learning and Community Engagement. We're very, very excited to share our thoughts with you tonight. We've been doing deep thinking about this for eight months. And under the direction of Superintendent Di, we've got some amazing things going on in the district and we're looking forward to further expanding them in ways that we haven't done before and that is going to be very meaningful for our students. So our program that we're looking towards capitalizing on foundations of CTE, excellence that drive program development and high-quality student outcomes, like higher graduation rates, which very uniquely and innovatively embed student learning in real-world authentic work. The Center for Applied Learning and Community Engagement is a center in concept only right now. At the time being, it refers to a growing group of programs that are characterized by key design and instructional principles and specific student learning outcomes. So now we're going to talk about the details of what we mean by applied learning, what we mean by community engagement, and describe to you how the programs benefit students. And finally, we're going to celebrate, if not outright brag, about the amazing successes of FutureBuild. So I'm super excited for that. FutureBuild is an exemplar for program design and high-quality outcomes and a model for the Center for Applied Learning and Communication. So what is applied learning? It is very simply, students learn by doing. They learn in work that is embedded in jobs. We use the term real world and I cringe at the term real world because what we're really talking about is students doing what what they should be doing, what we all do. And that there's somehow a separation between education and real authentic experience seems silly in some ways. So we're looking for ways to break down that, those orders. We're looking to train students for careers in high-demand, high-wage sectors. And that's language used by the state and by the fence. But really, what we're looking for is, we're looking for high-demand jobs in Lane County, in the state of Oregon. And there are workforce labor forecasts that we can look to to define what those jobs are. Additionally, when we talk about high wage, that's kind of an empty statement. But there are very specific family living wage indicators for Lane County that we can pinpoint and say, here's a job that is in high demand in Lane County that pays a family wage, living, and we can train students to enter that workforce and be right out of high school into a career that's going to lead them for another opportunity to gain success. We look for these programs to prepare students for multiple outcomes and those are going right into the job market. So we have ways to train students from making the right home high school into those opportunities for them to be those jobs. We want them to go into apprenticeships or on-the-job trainings. There's lots and lots of places in Lane County that that can happen. And then finally, we look for them to enter next-level education, whether it be into a community college pathway that extends the line we may be doing in a program study or into a four-year university setting. Additionally, students are going to get industry-recognized credentials, which means that when they go into the labor sector, they have a leg up. They are competitive in the job market. They're competitive when they enter an apprenticeship program or when they're applying for college and university sectors.
Hi there. It's a pleasure to be before you and get a chance to assist Tia here. The other, the next slide that we wanted to touch on is really our belief around how these programs connect with the community. Any kind of project-based learning is kind of rooted in authenticity. And we've been really fortunate to have some outstanding community partners that we've been working with here with FutureBuild. They, and also moving into the other programs that we're working on right now, around creative services, which is graphic design and media productions, things like that. Our community partners have been wonderful and they've helped us with our thinking, whether it be our own projects. Obviously, our community partners bring in industry sector knowledge and skills that's absolutely critical for our students to get the proper kind of training. And with the program in general, this whole idea around the Center for Applied Learning and Community Engagement has, you know, been a great collaborative. has, you know, been a great collaboration with some folks. Primarily John Stapleton from Ritter Architecture has been a wonderful thought partner. And I was going to say architect, which is, not to be a pun, because he is an architect. But it's really been helpful with that. The other thing that I think is so important about this is when we say community partners, that it puts us in partnership with the community. So, our students are working on community issues or community needs. And I think one way that we've kind of framed in our minds is that for the longest time, we've talked about college ready and career ready. If we could throw one more in there, we think of this as creating students that are community-ready so that they can help find their own place in the community, their own relationships are strengthened in the community in which they belong. And we feel like this is going to have, and should have, you know, really profound outcomes for, not just the students, but the community as well.
I'm going to talk a little about the instructional approaches. And a key part of this is that the learning is designed by teams of students, teachers, administrators, community professionals, community members, and others who are interested in the work that we're doing. So, we bring together design teams to do project-based learning, to which, and I would just want to emphasize, that students are integral to the development of those projects and the work that we're doing. Public demonstration is, learning is integral to the program. Students will be working for community agencies, for the school district, for clients, and in services of communities. So, the performance is not only validated by their teachers, it's validated by the people for whom they are doing these services. And that's really key, is that it makes the work that they're doing very public, it's on the public stage, and it's authentic. There's some really important aspects that differentiate this program from many of the other things that we do. And one of them is that core content is integrated into the learning of the applied job learning. So, for example, in our Futureville program, students are learning geometry for construction while they're doing construction. They're learning public speaking, they're learning how to read, blueprints, thank you, and public documents while they're doing the work. So, it's not, it really helps make the work relevant, makes their learning relevant in the core content. And one of, some feedback that we get when we do student surveys is that they don't see their lives and the relevance of what they're doing reflected in their education. And this is a way that we can really help students understand that there is real application for the core content that they're engaging in. Additionally, I cannot emphasize strongly enough how important this is, is that every program that we develop in the Center for Applied Learning and Community Engagement will include students from across the district. Them students in the four comprehensive high schools, it's students from Echo, it's students from the Eugene Online Academy. We want all students to be able to participate. We don't any further want to have situations where you only get to participate in a program if it's at your home high school. We need to break those barriers down. We are doing that now. We are providing transportation. We are providing extended days. We are providing ways for students to participate in unique and novel innovative ways that we haven't been able to before. We'll continue to look again and again and again and fight whatever systematic or systemic barriers may emerge that will prevent students from doing that. And just feel, I could not feel any public detail, I could not feel more strongly about that, that all students need to be able to access high-quality opportunities.
We wanted to, this slide just gave you kind of an insight into, I don't know, some of the things that drive the creation of these programs and these projects. But also to highlight that this is really, a way of thinking about this is thinking about it like a thought cycle. And in and of itself, it's really an approach to learning. When we, whether, whatever challenge there may be out there in the world, having the ability to confront that challenge without knowing what the answer is going to be, or without anybody being able to tell you what the answer is, is a really important skill for an uncertain future. And we try to practice this design thinking in a way that helps us understand maybe that, you know, when we're thinking about what kind of project would we be working on, or how would we design a program study? Or if we're going to engage with a community partner, what is it that we really want to try to solve or to serve? And by going through this iterative process where we first try to understand and empathize with the conditions and the people that we're working with, and through that, through that understanding, begin to really define the product, or really define the project. Then we can begin to design ideas. We can begin to create ideas of like, ooh, why don't we try this? Why don't we try this? And then we try it, knowing that when we try something the first time, it, you know, it might not work. It might not get the exact result that we want. But we know that we'll test it, we'll evaluate it, and we'll revise it. And all of that happens through a collaborative partnership, you know, with our community partners, with our teachers, with our students. And we just think that it's important to include this because it's kind of the thinking that is a large umbrella and it kind of works its way down through the various levels, all the way from the entire project as a center to a program study, to a particular project that that program study is engaged in committing to. So, just kind of an insight to how we approach the problems and how we want students to approach problems. Yeah, and then...
Well, I can bet you're thinking, oh, this is a great idea. You're fantasizing. You can't make this work. But yes, we can. We have. And I can't, I'm just so, so proudly proud of the work we've done with Futureville in the last two years. And I want to note that we have one of the Futureville teachers, Peter Weedy, in the audience with us tonight. Peter is a master math teacher. He's a former chair, math chair at South Eugene High School. He left that position to join Futureville. He's had a background in construction and manufacturing. He is also endorsed in English. So, he's one of the COGS that makes it possible for us to integrate language arts and math into the Futureville construction trade skills content. And it really is, it is fabulous. Futureville truly exemplifies all of the things that we want to build in our other programs. Our content is integrated. Students from all four high schools are participating. We transport them from their home high schools every single day to LCC, who was a partner with us in providing a facility. And it's amazing. Students leave right at the beginning of lunch. They don't return back to their home school until 4:30, and they are thrilled to be there the entire time. They love their project. They know that they can hear from students in a few minutes when we play a video. The students are, we had seven students in last year's pilot, which is our model. We're going to pilot, we're going to scale, we're going to move to a sustainable model. Last year, we had seven students in our pilot. This year, we have 28 as we've scaled it up. We're looking to have, you ready for it? 60 to 80 students next year at Futureville. That's what we're planning for. It's just fantastic. And those students will leave having worked in, worked alongside tradespeople, learning the skills, building a home, building housing for folks that are in transitional housing situations. So, not only are they learning skills, they're contributing to their community in a significantly meaningful way. They're tackling and helping out one of the most intractable problems in our community right now, and that is supporting people who are in the house. I'm just like, it's just, it's just an absolutely beautiful thing. I'm just thrilled that our district has provided the support necessary to help the community and help our students learn these skills, and many of them will go into this sector of high schools. So, I thank you to the board for your previous support of Futureville. Thank you for your support for the other programs that we're going to be creating. And I can't wait to come back next year and talk to you about the new programs that we put into place and how those are going to be along. So, with that, we would love to share with you the video for...
Ever since I was a little kid, I've always wanted to do some type of destruction.
Reconstruction is what my dad does, so I really love that.
There are a number of things that are different about this class.
They're able to not only get their high school credits, but they can get industry-recognized credentials in the construction.
Ever since I was a little kid, I've always wanted to do some type of destruction.
Reconstruction is what my dad does, so I really love that.
There are a number of things that are different about this class.
They're able to not only get their high school credits, but they can get industry-recognized credentials in the construction industry. They're able to get college credits through LCC. They're able to not only get their high school credits, but they can get industry-recognized credentials in the construction industry. They're able to get college credits through LCC. They're also able to get their elective credits through the construction classes, but also a math and language arts credit. So, it's a really, really neat program that we're really hoping to build upon going forward.
These classes are for free for high school students. And there are students that are spending thousands on this class for two years.
I absolutely love it, you know? Not only am I getting all this free training, you know, but I'm also getting to hang out with my friends. And they're learning the same thing as me, so if we grow up to all work in construction, we all learn the same, and we can all, you know, maybe one day make a company.
We are currently a half-day program rather than a traditional, you know, one period. We get students from four of the high schools in the Eugene area for half a day from Sheldon, South, North, and Churchill. It's also open to Echo.
And we're learning how to build houses, framing.
To measure accurately, to assemble, or, you know, if we give them a plan to assemble a wall.
We learned the tools. We learned how to use them safely and how to use them effectively. And we're now putting it on the site and working here with Miley Construction.
Students get what's called their blue card. It has a barcode on it. So, if they're to move to the Midwest or the East Coast, they could have their employer scan this card. It would tell them what modules or, you know, what credentials they have, what they've gone through a class.
Well, I would say the job prospects are very, very high.
So, just knowing these little skills, they already give me a higher advantage of many of the other people trying to get the job.
We're really committed to all of our projects being integrated with and serving the community.
With the project we're doing at LCC, we're building a transitional housing structure, which is to help people move up out of homelessness to get into their own house. The house that we're building at, for 4J, is going to be sold to low-income housing.
Makes, it makes me feel good, you know, being able to help out the community. This is a really good program. I would definitely recommend it.
There might be questions you want to ask.
Oh, yes, definitely.
There might not be, but... Thanks. First of all, I just want to thank Superintendent and you for leading this. I think it's one of the most important initiatives in the district, and one of the things I'm most grateful for having, and to guys superintendent for, for leading on this. And Peter Weedy for me is like the exemplary teacher of what I think we need to do a lot more in the district. I don't want to say too much, but there was a famous architecture school called Bauhaus that was in Germany in the 1920s and '30s, which started off being called the Arts and Crafts School because people thought art was something you only did with your head and crafts were things you only did with your hands. And their thing was putting that all together, that, you know, everybody has a mind and a body. And in school, too often, it's like if you're on academic track, then you're like a brain on a stick. And the only purpose of your body is to be a support system for your brain. And on the other hand, if you're talented with your hands, then you seem that you're not also intellectually curious and capable. And that's damaging for both types of students. So, I think this is exactly the direction that we should go in. And one of the things that I noticed, you were talking about community. And it's not just that people get to do things for their community and see the impact driving around, but also both in that video and in the story in the register guard, it was clear that it also created a community among the students who are doing this work when so much of school is either you do something in isolation, or even worse, you do it in competition against the other people you're with. And to have something that is a shared project is great. So, my only question is probably the question you don't want us to ask, which is, how much money do you want? Maybe that comes later, but, you know, I know that this is a multi-year thing. And, you know, I really appreciate what you said about starting small and then growing to scale at a place that is manageable. So, whether it's tonight or sometime later, I mean, I would just love to hear, you know, what is a way that we can support you to grow this as much as possible?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I do feel it's important that we start small and figure the problems out in a low-impact way, do it well, and then we grow successfully. And certainly, I'm just going to be really forthright. We have this ability to just, my number one concern right now is around facilities. So, that's something that we'll be talking about more. And then certainly, it takes people, it just absolutely takes people to pull off programs like this. We're looking at proposals and looking to long-term planning to predict and forecast what it's going to take to move this forward in a way that really changes the students' day, particularly in the new schedule. They're going to have time as juniors and seniors to participate in full and half-day programs. And so, the more opportunities we can provide like that, the sooner we... We're just going to see some amazing outcomes as students leave high school. And we want to go to their first second-hand plans. By giving them a variety of choices, it really changes the capital school for what graduation can and post-graduation can.
I'm curious if Peter and Waylon are the only two faculty members running all of this right now? For Futureville, for Future.
Yes, and if we, and we really are hoping to run quite frankly three cohorts of intermediate introductory students next year, as well as some of our juniors into the advanced class next year. We are hoping literally to have 60 to 75 new students coming to the program. And, you know, Waylon and I are not going to be able to do that on our own, so we'll be looking to add more stuff to the program.
Well, thank you to Peter and Waylon for getting this all rolling, as well as the two of you as well.
Thank you.
That video was wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, Judy?
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation. I think it was just off to a great start. And I really appreciate your comment that you have to work through. Um, and I really appreciate your comment that you have to work through a lot of barriers. I'm really aware of a lot of the barriers to make something like this happen with licensure of teachers and getting industry licenses, et cetera. So, and, um, for Gordon, I mean, I think we have a stream of fundings, the CTE funding is exactly for this, and I'm assuming that, that is partially what's going into this. And my question is, besides the great thank you, um, are we also coordinating, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of action in our county with Connected Land County and Elevate, and they've made great, I mean, they've done a lot of this work for technology and health, you know? So I'm hoping we're coordinating and sharing our work and offering things across the district because I think we would all benefit.
Yeah, thank you for asking that. Yes, we do. We, uh, work closely with Connected Land County on a number of projects, including their Spark Lab. Um, we support, uh, students' internships and with them during the summer, paid internships. Um, Land ESD is a, um, is a key partner to help develop some of these programs, so the transitional program that we're doing, Constructing a Brighter Future, is coordinated by, um, the ESD. So there, there are a number of, um, regional programs that we're tapping into as well, specifically, um, the house, the home build is specifically, um, a 4J project.
Felicia?
Thanks. It's funny, I remember chatting about this when I was member of Connected Land County, something like seven years ago, and about the coordination. So I know home build is ours, but it's exciting to think about how we can share with others. Um, I know we, if I remember correctly, we bought this property and started this process and project, uh, summer of 2021. So we're, we're getting started, and I, I just can't help but do a shout out to Jim Torre, who when he first got on the board, started talking about CTE and carried it through his whole time on the board, and I was glad he was there when we bought the property and started. Um, but my question really is, when do we get a site visit to the home build? And I would love to see what's going on at SCC too. So, uh, maybe when it's warmer outside, but we could go in the wood, in winter when it's inside, but it's just so exciting, uh, to see what's happening. I really appreciate it, and I really would like to go out and see it. Thanks.
Well, we would, uh, be thrilled at any time to, to, um, give a tour of, of the home site, um, of, of our county. And, um, it's, we will just, FYI, we will complete it this spring. Our seniors will come back and they will do nothing but be working, primarily working on that home site, and then, um, we will work with our community partner, Dead Northwest, to, um, to hand that on to family. So, um, it's not happening this spring, but we would love to have any of the board members, um, and, you know, have a take a look. Additionally, um, the transitional, um, housing that we're building, which are currently in SCC, will be placed in a number of community centers, uh, community housing projects around, um, transitional housing projects around, um, Sydney, Eugene. We'd love to, to, um, be looking at those projects with board members as well.
Hey, I'm sorry I'm not there in person to see this, but I really appreciate the presentation and the thought that's gone into, um, what this was going to look like over the next several years. Um, and to echo Gordon's, um, sentiments around, um, very again, it's been the tracking of like separating academics from application as that they are two separate, different things, um, which our brains don't work that way, and our schools really shouldn't work that way either. Um, so I really appreciate this thought. Um, I'd be, um, also would love to do a site visit. Um, we'd love to see the students working in their environments. Um, I think it's just so meaningful to be able to capture their stories as well too. And, um, in terms of the budgets and funding, I would really, um, over the next several weeks, months, however this is working out, just seeing kind of what the like short, medium, and long-term kind of goals and, um, times that you're looking to achieve in those things on there, and then hopefully we can plan accordingly. But I do love the idea that you guys have taken the time to sit through on making sure we're doing this well. Um, I believe in setting up like cases that are actually working well and can show, um, results, and then taking and being able to adjust accordingly as we start expanding. But, um, I just really wanted to congratulate you guys on the thought that's gone into this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, you guys, you know, there's a standing invitation to come check this out, so just let us know and we'll, we'll make it happen.
Awesome. Thank you, Deanna and Dennis. And Peter.
Next up, as an item for information, we will receive an update on the Integrated Guidance Plan Narrative.
So not, not really much conversation here, other than, uh, in a public meeting with the board, uh, with the listening audience, inviting folks to take a look at the narrative that is required, uh, that we submit with our budgetary information for integrated guidance. It's, um, the compilation of our comprehensive needs assessment. We have four sections that are included in the board packet that are posted on the website this week. Uh, we'll, we'll update with the final three in preparation for the coming board meeting. We will be sending out information for the public and members of the board, EEA, OSCEA, everyone, frankly, students as well, to ask questions, to ask clarifying questions, provide us for more information. The, the narrative sections are what we believe provides some justifications for the items that we'll go over in the next section of our meeting. We are required to demonstrate as part of the application process that we've not placed this on a consent agenda, or just placed it on the website that we're publicly inviting people to come and take a look. More than happy to answer any questions that you have right, right now, but wouldn't expect that you would read all of the narrative sections for preparation for the meeting. Judy says that she did, so I'm more than happy to talk about that. But, but again, just, uh, an open invitation for, for public comment and scrutiny on the decisions that we're about to make here in a, in a matter of months.
Sure.
Judy? Um, I had one really specific question on page 99 of our packet, but the old heading said, "How, how will you prepare CTE participants for non-traditional fields?" And what would be an example of a non-traditional field?
When one thinks of health occupations, the most common, uh, idea of, "I want to go into the medical field, so I want to be a nurse, I want to be a doctor." But we want to prepare students, uh, in partnership with Peace Health, for example, for all of the variety of jobs that one can do in the healthcare field that don't just require a four-year or an eight-year or 12-year education post-graduate.
Ultra son, you're excellent. Okay. And, um, I just wanted to make a request, and I, it's, you know, under the section of, um, the needs assessment, um, it'd be great to, I mean, it sounds like you gathered data at the very beginning, needs assessment, that some, you know, I, I don't know if there's anywhere to see the information that you do gather, this, somewhere like you talked about surveys and talking to people you talk to, obviously pull things out, and I just was curious if there's any way to see input back.
I don't have the information, my tongue is, we've got that?
I'm, I'm just making the request.
Sure, no problem.
Yes.
Judy?
Um, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to echo what Judy said on some of the data. I am really curious on the, the stakeholders that were surveyed and engaged in this process and kind of what the, uh, engagement looked like and what, um, some of the actually, um, results were of those. So whenever you get a chance, that would be lovely to share. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I want to piggyback on that same question, and, um, I know there's been lots of different conversations and, and media by which we've gathered data, and I'm just curious if, um, in the meetings or the surveys or the conversations, uh, were the participants aware that they were contributing to this, or is it a collection of, of input that happens to also influence this? So I don't know if that can be answered now or later or what, but, um, I think that, uh, I, I just am curious, I, I want to make sure that the community doesn't feel as though they weren't included in the conversation, um, and so I just want to make sure that we're intentional about, about how and why we were, um, collecting it.
Yeah, and in the event that someone missed that nuance, this is another opportunity. So when the information's posted and social media notifications go out, you see something that you like, there'll be an opportunity for you to amplify that. If you see something that you feel is, that was missing, there'll be something, a way for you to, to notify us of that. The first, um, time that we did the SIA process, there was a very different method of community engagement and, um, collecting information about what needed to be done. The, the way that we approached it this time is that we know that class size remains an issue, remains a desire. We don't necessarily think we need to ask, "Hey, do you still want smaller class sizes?" Uh, some of the things that we have been working on are durable over time, and we've heard of for many, many years, things that we wanted, more opportunities for students, access to career technical education, smaller class sizes, more adults. But, but we absolutely want folks to, um, share their thoughts with us out, and I'll get the information that has been requested for that coming meeting.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, great. Uh, the next item for information is for us to receive a list of potential integrated guidance activities. Pass it back to you.
I don't know if this is the meat or the potatoes, but closely related to the last topic of conversation, I'm, I'm pleased to have, uh, two superintendents, assistant superintendents, with us this evening, Sidney Vaynerkar and Brooke, setting this up. Um, what we did was we have brainstormed from the information that we have and the systems that we have in place and the efforts that we started with the first round of SIA funding. We have far more great ideas than there are funding to support. So what you're going to hear this evening is, um, truly where we are in the process, and that is a listing, not of, this is how many teachers we're going to target for this particular school, uh, but, but where we are with a more refined set of ways in which we are going to mobilize staff and mobilize resources to get to our strategies that will ultimately, um, result in the outcomes of more timely communication and better meaningful engagement, and amplified focus on the needs of historically underserved populations while meeting everyone's needs, and safety and wellbeing for all students and staff. So, um, the panel before, before us is going to take turns throughout the slides. I'm going to start with some that you have seen a number of times, and that is by design, again, um, our three big rocks that I just mentioned. We are trying in as many ways as we possibly can to repeat what we're doing so that we help folks who aren't necessarily at the ed center or always listening to these conversations, who say to us, "We really don't know what the focus or what the vision of the district is," and, and, or communication is the key. So I think you've got that, uh, as a guiding foundation for all of the work. You've seen this before, integrated guidance really deals with six major areas of braided funding and braided efforts across the entire district, high school success, student investment account, um, continuous, our continuous improvement and planning process, career technical education, everyday matters, which refers to attendance, and early indicators and intervention systems. There are, um, again, the three big rocks aligning with integrated guidance in that they're looking for an engaged community, for equity to be advanced, and for every student to have the benefit, and, um, low-barrier access to a well-rounded education. So you've seen this before as well, there are six phases of the integrated guidance process. Evaluation, which is where we gather the information you were asking for some raw data on earlier. Engagement with the community, which is something that they're continuing to do right now and will for remainder of the year. We have to identify strategies that will lead us to our outcomes. And now we're in the second or the third of the board presentations, there'll be another on the first and another on the 15th. Once we get a finalized list of approved activities from this group, this group being the board, we'll begin the budgeting process so we know that we have, uh, a bottom-line balance, and by the 31st of March, we have to submit the application to the state that will then, when approved, allow us to apply for the grants themselves. And the strategies, um, safety and wellbeing for all students and staff, focus on equitable outcomes for all, with an amplified focus on the desires of underserved student communities, as mouthful, meaningful engagement, timely communication. I think that this is where I hand it over to the panel of pros.
Thanks, Dr. Guy. Good evening, my name is Ms. Edelwitz Vieres, I am a co-director of Equity and Inclusion. What you see in front of you, um, are slides with, uh, different proposed activities. Uh, it's not an exhaustive list, but simply some of the highlights that we are proposing. Um, I'd like to just feature the last bullet is one thing that we're really excited about proposing is continuing, working with the RIN. And for those that don't know what RIN stands for, it stands for Western Regional Educator Network, and the RIN is an educator-led improvement-focused network that elevates and embraces teachers' voices. This is our second year partnering with RIN. In addition, we're working with RIN, we're also collaborating with EEA Vice President Yvonne Lopez, and, uh, between her and RIN, we have, uh, hosted activities where we bring staff of color together. Last year it was just licensed, this year it's all staff, and, um, it's been very, very successful, and staff want more, which is why we're proposing to, to expand it for next year.
It's not a very, not very long, Mike. Uh, I'm Larry Williams, other, uh, co-director of Equity and Inclusion, and, uh, because there's two of us who've, uh, chose to, to feature something on there, and, and what I'd like to just point out is the affinity group, uh, resources for schools. Um, it's come up quite a bit, uh, as the students spoke and, and just throughout the night. Um, I think over the last year and a half, us really amplifying this opportunity for our, uh, underserved students to participate, uh, in affinity groups has really paid off, uh, mostly in a way of student voice. Had some things come to our attention, uh, just by virtue of having a space for them to talk, collaborate, and then have the confidence to share out to the district, and we're, uh, we all know students' kids are expensive, so, uh, we're adding this as one of the continuation for resources.
Sidney Vaynerkar, Assistant Superintendent, and I am not going to read each bullet just the same as, uh, what we just did, but I want to point out that middle school, um, class size reduction, um, we have the lowest class sizes in the elementary, middle, and high school than we've had in a very long time, and part of that is due to using SIA dollars to put CTE into each middle school so that those class sizes are smaller. Uh, and then, the high school extended day is important because we have over 250 seniors this year that don't have enough credits to graduate, and so we've put money into extending the day and allowing students to receive more credit than they want to so that they can be on track to graduate by the end of the year.
Just doing hot potato with the mic. Um, one of the things that we have under safety and wellbeing for students and staff, and you'll see also integrated prevention and mental health under other areas of strategies, um, because of, obviously, the importance of it, I want to speak to the umbrella of our prevention unit that was started this past school year. We have care and advocacy as one part of that, we also have intervention and postvention, which is connected to ADIZAC, which is part of that, in addition to prevention education. And so specifically on this slide, you can see our care and advocacy staff, which is part of that umbrella, and that is specifically, um, our mental health workers that we have in nutrition. We currently have five, we are bringing two more on, and we are hoping, um, two more on currently, and we're hoping to add one more next year because we'd like to have two mental health, um, specialists in nutrition. When I mean region, I mean the high school, that serve students. Oh, that's me again. There's a couple in a row for me. Um, this is our last area under safety and wellbeing for, for students and staff. If... If, I'm thinking many of board members were on, they were part of the original SIA communication that Dr. Dye referenced earlier. And one of the investments happening at that time was particularly behavior support happening at elementary. And we had an opportunity with the Student Investment Act at this time then to mirror that for middle school. So that is one of the activities that we have listed to continue based on that original investment.
So if I may just give you a landscape for those of you that are seeing the slides, you'll see on the left, on the bottom, one of the big rocks, one of our major outcomes. And then the bullet at the top to the, to the right is the strategy that we're going to use to try to make that outcome a reality. And then the bullets underneath that are going to be the specific activities. And you'll notice this evening, there's not a dollar amount attached to any of these because there's more money than, or excuse me, there's more ideas than we have money to fund. So we'll have to cull this a bit and focus our efforts. And then we'll know exactly how much we can dedicate to, for example, targeted class sizes in elementary, targeted class sizes in middle schools.
So turn your attention, we'll be looking at under the second big rock, focus on equitable outcomes for all students with a handle that focuses on the desire of the underserved student communities. So it's a good one. What I want to point out on this slide, really point your attention to our equity regional managers as well as our student affinity group and program coordinators. Those are the folks that are, have been placed in schools to actually support students in real time. So they're actually there at the schools. And the program coordinators are the folks that are moving from school to school to ensure that our advisors, the folks that are running our affinity groups, have everything that they need. So these are super supports. I think I mentioned Natus Program moving into the district full is also a win as well. And then the universal design for learning, the training, anti-racist work is, has also been big in the district. We'd like to continue to.
Next slide talks about our promoting our MTSS multi-tiered system of support. And one of the things I want to point out is our directory of care and management system. We are currently, as stated earlier, with just starting our prevention unit. One of the things that we have Dr. Kerry Frazee working on with all schools is a directory of care for the district and a directory of care for each building. And that would be a repository and electronic place, whether it's through the website as a district or a building website, where they can go and see what mental health specialists support their building. Who's their nurse? Who are their guidance counselors? Who are the people, who are the community partners helping that building support? So we're hoping to have, we're in the process of developing a place that, that can be a place where a family member, a staff member, a student could go and see drilled down to their building site, a directory of care. And we're continuing, we're in the process of building that.
So this is the little one as well, so I won't read them again. But what I think the board might already know, but for anyone listening, because of our limited resources, we've hired different groups of people. We're on the wrong side. What I said is true, but well, having the education is not. Okay, while we're removed to this.
I just go back to the one I was on.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. There it is. Okay. So what I said is still true, but with limited resources, we are unable to hire specialists for every school. So many of the people that are listed on this page are itinerant, which means they move from school to school across the district. And then also on this page is the CTE expansion, which you just heard about. And it'll be on another slide as well. So with the new teacher mentors, that's the one I really want to point out is the program is new and we use SIA dollars to pay for. Teachers have mentors, over 110 teachers have a mentor in the district. And typically they're one or two-year experience new to the district. And it is, may all be difference for those, those teachers who have come in and needed that extra help. So, and I would say all new teachers probably need a mentor. But we, we use the money and I believe this is a wise decision.
There we, there we go. I wanted to spotlight our staff that is working collaboratively for early learning opportunities and pre-K opportunities. Oregon Social Learning Center has been running what we call KITS the last many summers. And this past summer, we were able to double our participation in KITS. And we have a pilot program happening at Chavez Elementary where we're using the KITS curriculum embedded in the school day. And our initial response from Chavez staff has been really positive. And we're, we are hoping to expand that next year. So Chavez is one of, one of our most highly impacted elementary schools and is making a large difference in how our early kinders get started in their school year. So that's a bright spot that we have, I'm hoping to continue.
And then the next slide, there isn't the, oh, there we go. Just is what we talked about with Tina and Ed. And for all of those who asked to come visit, you didn't hear Pete in the back, but he was like, any day you can just stop in. He was really excited to show off everything that they were doing. So this is high school, high school success in the past. And so high school success will be folded in with SIA and all the other ones that Dr. Dye listed at the beginning. And so this is what it used to look like, I mean, under the high school success funds.
And the last area, strategy under equitable outcomes for all with an amplified focus on the desires of underserved students and communities is third grade literacy. This is actually one of the key performance indicators the state is asking us to track. And we know that it is data that comes after we serve our students. And this is really connected to our adoption that we went through pretty rigorously last year for elementary curriculum adoption and a lot of supports that are happening. K5 says increase third grade literacy because that's the indicator that the state is looking at. We have this where we want to, our focus is on K5 literacy supports. One thing specifically that we've done with this, these dollars is target first grade reading groups. We have in our general fund kindergarten support staff and kinder classes. And one of the things we wanted to replicate to be able to have a second year of another adult in the classroom with our first grade teachers. So this is the, an area in which the reading support for first grade comes out of. That's the last under the second rock. As I move to the third.
And the, the third rock is meaningful engagement and timely communication. And one area that we, that I want to focus on is ninth grade transition coordinators and counselors. And there's a lot of research that shows that when students are successful in ninth grade, have a higher likelihood that they'll graduate from high school in four years. And so we want to continue that with an amplified focus on vocal groups, on, by making sure that the high schools have transition specialists and access to counselors.
Another place that we have integrated prevention and mental health model is obviously under engagement of our community and timely communication. And I want to spotlight our community partners that we've been working with. We have hoots that we have been able to expand where they're in each high school for a half a day, which is doubled than what we had last year. We also have partnered with Oregon Social Learning Center for substance abuse counseling support happening in our high schools. We also have been partnering with Ophelia's Place, who provides support at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at all of our middle schools. And then in addition, just recently, under high school success, because we're, as we blend and weave the multiple funding sources, we have contracted with SAS. Because we'll have SAS also in our high schools. So just wanted to call out those four community agencies that we really feel having them on our campuses has been critical for students. Next is extended learning opportunities. And a couple of Sid mentioned the high school extended day. That is also a new program this year. And each high school is hosting coursework in the evening from four to seven. And dinner and transportation are provided to those students who are working towards credit acquisition. And then the other part that Tia and Ed also mentioned was our summer bridge intensive programs. We are continuing that. And I think even next week, the RFP for staff to write their class coursework for the summer offerings is opening. So we're already beginning to work on that.
This next area focuses on wraparound supports. You'll notice on the second bullet, said mobile food truck. I don't know if you recall, you know, two years ago, we started a partnership with Lutheran County. And then last year, they provided a mobile food truck that would come out to the district office in all four regions. It would stock over food and the community can come out and shop. For one reason or another, Lutheran County couldn't provide a truck anymore. But we would love to be able to provide that to our community. You know, as, as you might, may have read news, COVID relief funds are in need. And so it's still very much a thing where our, our community is still rapidly with an impact of COVID, of the pandemic. And so this could potentially offer just needed basic supplies. So we want to propose that. Okay, if you go back, we, Larry mentioned, actually wanted me to mention that it's a partnership with our native program as well. So not just.
Yeah, some, some next steps. First verse, third verse, same as the first, a little bit louder and a little bit worse. But you've seen this again. We're making a presentation today. We will take community input. We'll be requesting community or input from EEA and OSEA maps. We'll begin to narrow down our focus on specific items and get more articulate on those that are durable and will, we believe are best placed into the final plan, building a budget. We'll present this to you on the first, take more community input and further refine it in, in an effort to get it to you on the 15th of March for your final approval meeting.
Can I ask a question about one of those items while I have the experts in front of me? I'm curious, and I didn't catch the whole title of this, but what is the difference between CTE and applied learning and what you referred to as, or what was referred on as charge, this job embedded instructional, something else? There's like a fourth word there that I didn't write down.
I'll give it a shot. And if I misrepresent, please let me know. So career and technical education, there's a funding stream, Perkins Grants, that are related to the number of students who are concentrators and complainers. Then there is high school success, which funds both CTE pathways of study that are a part of, but not all of, applied learning. A student could be in the Center for Applied Learning, engage in some of those classes, but not anticipate being in a CTE program to complete the entire pathway of study. So we want to make sure that that's available too. And the job embedded. Right, so then we don't have people that come to the Ed Center or Big Hill and play the PD and then go out for a day of PD day and deliver that and then go back and play more. It's people that are in schools, working side by side with teachers to adopt curriculum or adopt new instructional approaches like universal design for learning. That's more classroom-based, teachers helping teachers while the teacher is teaching the class.
Okay, so it's not, it's not instructional. Okay, I got you.
Thanks. First, I just want to thank all of you for the, I know this is a tremendous amount of work to, to get this together. My main question is about when we can get the budget. And, you know, we spend, I don't know, more or less all year hearing about things that are critical that we certainly don't have money to do all of them. And this is obviously for everybody in the district, this is the single biggest chunk of discretionary funding. And so to be able to think about, do we want, you know, do we need more nurses or more counselors or more, you know, more this program or more that program is when basically everything on the list is good and important. But that decision, you know, is only really meaningful in the context of money. And I know that this is a year old, so many things are going on. And like, everybody in the world is short-staffed and overworked. But, so I'm just wondering how far, one, how can we get anything before March 1st? And particularly because we have EEA and OSEA, I believe, will be at the March 1st meeting to present the teachers and EAs and classified employees views of what would be a smart way to use this money. And for them too, I assume, only because it's true for me, it's really hard to do that without saying, okay, here's a proposal, we'd spend this much on this and this much on this. Could they really need to be able to say, no, that's a great thing, but here's something that's even more important? Or not, I hadn't realized, that's actually the best way to spend the money. So if it's possible to have that in, before, somewhat before the March 1st meeting, so the people we want to hear from can look at it and give us input in that framework, that would be terrific.
Our intention would be to include a budgeted list, a budgeted, smaller list of activities in the board packet in preparation for the March 1st meeting and make that more publicly available. So you would get that no later than February 24th. So I don't know, a little bit over me.
Yeah, okay. Thanks very much.
Trudy?
Yeah, first of all, thank you. There's so many things I really love in the plan, I don't even know where to start. I think you really hit a lot of those key places that I think will make our students successful across the district. I did have one question though. This is, I, when Kirky gave her comments, she said her elementary-age kids were in affinity groups. I was thinking they were just in high schools and middle schools. So do all the elementary schools have, how does that work?
So our plan, as most of you know, our department got started last year. And really, we had put together a budget for two years for secondary schools and then to bring on elementaries in the third year. And so we're in our second year, elementaries don't want to wait. So, so we do have lots of elementary groups cropping up for all seven of our affinity group types. And so we're just going with them if they come up. And the good part is, is because we have program coordinators, their experience with what it took to start a group at the high school, they move that to the elementary school or to the middle school, to the elementary school. So I think it's a much easier process when you have it as someone's job to go around and help schools stay up and running. And so I would attribute that to a large part of why they're there and interest is there.
Thank you. That's exciting to hear. And I was also excited to hear all the community programs you're partnering with. So, thanks.
Larry, any other questions?
I think one thing that I just want, I know Dr. Dye has mentioned this before because this is, I think, seven percent of our, approximately seven percent.
Like that, yeah.
Yeah, and not new money. It's a new way for us looking at the money because now it's woven together. So I just, that's, and thinking about the feedback or that's the hard part. There's so many things that we want to do, can't do them all, and we have to figure out how to. And I think those, that's the information that we'll be bringing forward.
Excellent. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have receding debt update and to engage in a discussion around mutual backwash and critical school options. Back to you again.
Back to me, greatest hits. So the purpose of the conversation tonight is not necessarily to make any decisions, but it's to publicly, in a public meeting, share wherever we are, have a public conversation at the board level. I wanted to let those that didn't know be aware that there's a board subcommittee, the North Division Subcommittee, that has two members, Maya Vasa and Michelle Chu, whose role is to gather information and meet with staff, meet with the community, bring information back to the board that can be deliberated so that decisions can be made at public meetings like this. I believe that there was some confusion earlier on that that Subcommittee was going to make a decision. And that places those folks in an awkward position. They they can't make by board policy a decision on behalf of the whole board. When the Subcommittee goes out, again, it's just to gather information. So our next meeting, the Kelly YG staff, will be this Friday. What we had gotten earlier was a list of desires from both Kelly and YG that they had crafted last spring. And as it turns out, some of the things on those lists persist over time. And some of the things that they experienced over the course of this year made them prioritize other things. And so we've gotten new lists. I know that staff have reached out to some degree to their respective administrator and listed the things that needed to be fixed in classrooms. And that that John and Tom are going through the process of putting in facilities improvement requests for things that might not necessarily require board approval, but certainly make their rooms more functional and more appropriate for the instructional experience they want to provide for students. The idea for this Friday would be to go back out and reiterate our desire, our intent to purchase the furniture and the fixtures and the technology that is needed. I want to speak out of turn. I believe that there's some work being done on filling out those purchase orders and going through a process of identifying exactly what it is that is going to be purchased. And then we want to have a conversation about what are the space needs that can be accommodated in the real construction that we anticipate doing at eight fifty Howard. And I wanted to open it up for conversation here so that I could hear questions and the members of the Subcommittee could hear questions from the balance of the board that need to be posed and some feedback that would like to be gathered when we have that next meeting with the Kelly YG staff on Friday. And we plan for community meetings after that. We do have not an extremely tight timeline that should make us rush too fast, but but time is of the essence. And if we're going to do construction at that site, we want to be able to get through the design phase, given good information from Kelly YG staff, design the space, get permits in, and get a contract, because those things are taking one more time. So at this point, I would just open it up to members of the board to post questions or make requests of information that you'd like to see us have at the meeting closing.
Gordon, you look ready to ask some questions?
I guess I just wanted to be able to, to be able to, it's not even me, but for the district to be able to go into those meetings with community and staff with as much transparency as possible about the money, about how much money is potentially available to renovate the current building or, you know, what the different options cost. Why isn't there, I don't mean in an accusatory way, but like, really, why isn't there, why are some options off the table? So that this has been a, everybody knows this has been a long and bitter process. And I think we're at a point where we can be totally transparent about what's, what the resources are and then engage, engage both staff and parents in a, like, okay, here's the amount of money we have. What is the best thing to do with it? So I know that's a, I assume, I just wanted to stress that because often, often people get numbers and you don't know exactly where the numbers come from, or you don't know, okay, but is there money in some other pocket? Because budgets are hard like that. So as as completely hoping as we can be.
If I may, we had proposed between money that had been set aside with bond to support Kelly YG. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of five million dollars. We received some premium on the bond, and as time has gone on, our investments have given us some dollars. We have other money within the district for capital improvement and capital projects that we're reprioritizing for Kelly YG. If we find ourselves, excuse me, the the construction that had been previously proposed, talking between that and the furniture fixtures and technology spending between ten and twelve million, we may be able to spend more on construction if we spend less on furniture fixtures and technology or more, you know how this works, more on furniture fixtures and technology, less on construction. And then if we find ourselves in a position where what we need is more than that, more than the ten to twelve million, what we're talking about then is making further reprioritizations to projects that we had anticipated during deferred maintenance down the line. The money that we're using now, aside from the five million that was in the bond for this purpose, would generally go to deferred maintenance towards the end of this bond cycle. As an example, we put a new roof on Sheldon, a new roof on Monroe, and a new roof on Spencer View with money that had been from prior bonds for higher bond premium than we anticipated in interest from short-term investments. So I think it's difficult to say this is exactly how much we have. We know what we're starting with. We'll be really transparent about that. And if if the proposed project exceeds that amount, then we would just need to come back and have a conversation here about what that would mean and what might be possible if we were to reprioritize something else.
If you have more questions, go for it. I don't see anybody else in the room to raise your hand.
I guess I'm just, I'm a little unclear. So the process that you're meeting, is it like just wide open about potential solutions? Is it to talk about one or two? I guess I'm really sort of confused where we are in that maybe I'm not.
One or two.
Of options that we thought of and then open for others. I I guess I just don't really know how that conversation is going to happen.
Yeah, my hope would be to have a, to have a listening session where the staff have been working with amongst themselves and their respective administrative teams to talk about what new space is available and how might we reallocate space or designate which school would use which space and in that case, what would need to be added. We could have come to the, those conversations with some proposals, but in the past, it has maybe appeared as though those proposals were not in response to the information that we could get to people who are living there on a day-to-day basis, teaching and working and writing. So our hope at this point is to hear from them what it is that they need in terms of space so that we can go back and take that information and give it to the facilities group to work with designers and design a response to their stated needs and get that priced out to where we can see what would be possible.
In the existing space.
Correct. At eight fifty Howard with, obviously, construction. We're going to build things that aren't currently there.
Gordon.
Thanks. I just want to, I think this is already the plan, but I just want to urge to include the question of use of the Old North High School building as part of the conversation that happens both with with staff and with families in that community. And and I really appreciate your, your raising the possibility of, I guess, corporate speak, they say, repurposing funds that were for deferred maintenance to this. I mean, basically, I just think that we, there, there's what would be good to do for the school, and then there's the fact that we owe a debt to this community because it was misled. And I don't mean to say that in an accusatory way, but if the, my understanding is that right now, to redo, just to get the Old North building up to code is thirty million dollars. And then that even doesn't make it usable as either a middle school or elementary school. Maybe I have that wrong, but basically, if something like that is true, it's totally fair to say, okay, there, this isn't an affordable option. But we know that when this first happened three years ago, Kelly and YG were told, when this is done, one of your options will be to choose to occupy the Old North building. So that that doesn't have to be, however it happened, it happened, but without having to be anybody's fault, the fact is that people were, were misled at the time of the bond and maybe unintentionally. But I think that creates a debt. It makes sense that I would support what you're saying is taking some money that we might not otherwise say. So you don't have to do what we can to make this situation whole. So I appreciate that.
Does anybody have, oh, Alicia.
Thanks, Fire, and thanks for bringing this forward. We absolutely need to quit kicking this can down the road. You need to deal with this. I just want to clarify something. No one was promised the Old North. It was a creative idea, but it was always up in the air as to whether it was even possible. So I know you weren't on the board at the time, Gordon, so you don't know that. But I don't want to make it look like we promised something and then reneged. We did not. We were unsure it was even possible. And one of our board members was the one that first brought it up and went out and walked it off to see if it was even possible. So it was pretty preliminary. We did say we would support them in getting space and making it the best possible. That's what we promised. Thanks. Man, I hate being not in the room. Maya, what was funny? Did I miss something? It's hard when you can only see the pictures. Thanks.
I, Gordon looked like he was going to speak and then said he wasn't. So nothing was funny. Gordon.
I wasn't sure because you were laughing. Thanks.
I know that I've seen, we all have seen documents that were handed out in the community that said one of the options is using the Old North High School. So I'm, I was not on board with the bond's creator. You're a hundred percent right, Alicia. I'm not. I don't have anything to say about that, but I think we need to, to, you know, recognize and be straightforward about what what people were told and that's the difference between that and the situation we face now. Thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments that you want to have us bring to the Kelly YG staff and maybe the other?
Judy. I guess, I, I, I'm sort of in agreement that it's really time to get going. And I just don't want to feel like we're starting over from scratch. We've had listening sessions. I guess there's maybe new parents and new staff. So I just want to be sure that there's a time limit on that we actually make a plan. And, yeah.
I, I think one of the big differences is that we're now talking about two and a half times the amount of money that we were talking about before. So we're listening to new conversations, but it's not, it's not the same. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I think there's a big difference between five and twelve million dollars. So I, I think it's only fair that we engage the conversation and also in the process, listen in a way that allows the current board to have direct access to the community instead of relying on a little bit of outdated telephone. Michelle.
I have also just joined in this conversation and I'm joining with fresher ears, I think. And I'm not going to take into too much consideration what happened in the past because we need to look forward. And I've seen the willingness of the staff who I met just in the last meeting in January and their willingness to collaborate. And I think that the community is also looking for a viable solution that works for everyone. And that's the outlook I'm going to take going in. And the fact that there is more money opens up a lot of possibilities. And I think that we have heard our fellow board members and everyone's eagerness in resulting, whatever happened before, and moving forward.
So it sounds like it's up to Michelle and I to gather information. I'm not hearing any questions that you all want us to bring or any specific pieces of insight you would like us to solicit from the staff? Okay, I see you poised to talk.
Yeah, I just want to, I feel like I need to say, be on the record because we're in a public meeting. But but I do want to say that when we, when folks come out on Friday, we are very sincere about, as Alicia said, not kicking the can down the road. That's not to disparage the work that anybody's done in the past. That's not helpful or even accurate. I, I, we come out there with as much transparency as we can, with the amount of money that we have, truly asking for you to tell us what it is that you think is needed and then for us to work together with facilities and instruction to design something at a price that we can afford and and move forward as best we can. That's our commitment.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? No? Okay, well, with that, then we move on to items for action. We'll start with the one that was on the agenda originally, Act on Legislative Committee Guidance for 2023. Judy, do you want to present, or do you want to just jump in and make your motion?
I guess my, if anyone has any questions, we put it in the packet. Would you like me to review it or?
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, good. Then no need to present it.
Sid, do you want to make a motion?
Oh, can I, can I do that? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the the guidance for the Legislative Committee about how they can, what actions they can take during legislative session and what things come to the board that appears in the packet.
Is there a second? Okay, Kirky, I see you're the first. So moved by Judy to adopt the guidance that is presented to us in our packets and regarding Legislative Committee and their ability to take action of what they would bring to the board. Seconded by Kirky, is there any discussion? In that case, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. I'm aye. I see a unanimous raising of hands, the hands raised by Kirky, Josie J. Kaufman, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Chu, Maya Vasa, Gordon Laker, and Judy Newman, that passes unanimously. We move on to. We move on to the item for action that we had at the beginning of the meeting. By, in fact, by Gordon Laker, approval of board goals as presented in our work session. Somebody like to make a motion? Gordon.
Thanks. I move that we approve the board goals that we discussed in the work session. Every, I emailed these out to everyone earlier. I can share the screen, but it includes changed language. It's a point one that was recommended by Judy Newman. It includes a change to point six that says finalize a long-term plan for the current North building as well as ensuring viability and success of the Kelly YG program. It adds a point seven, which has worked to stabilize the four J budget to reduce dependency on reserves, including consideration of appropriate reserve target. And then this part we did not, we have not discussed, but Judy and I, Judy proposed it, the two of us were up at the end, which is just to say that at will before the final. the final board meeting of the year, the superintendent and or board chair will provide a progress report on these goals. So that's, that would be my proposal.
Okay, that's a long motion. So the motion is to approve the board goals as we finalized in our work session with the addition of the revisiting at the end of the school year.
Just a progress report.
A progress report at the, at the end, before the last meeting of the year. Okay. Is there a second? I see a seconded by Judy. Is there any discussion? I want to make sure everyone understands that there's an addition that we didn't discuss in our work session. So if you have questions about that now would be the time. Although it's pretty straightforward. I don't see any hands raised. In that case, all those in favor of approving the board goals as presented in our work session with the addition of a progress report before the last school board meeting of the year, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. I see unanimous hands raised, with hands raised by Maya Rasa, Gordon Laker, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Shu, Kirthy, Hesija Kaufman and Judy Newman. Board goals are approved unanimously. Now we have item for action at a future meeting. The board is not scheduled to take action on these items tonight. We will come back for, not back, these items will come back to the board for future action at a meeting to come. Up first, we have a presentation by Colin A. Beard on the selection process for an equity trainer.
Please.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight to share about the selection process. I think our desire as staff is to provide for you in a work session, a sample scope of work that would outline what you would hope to achieve through having an equity trainer come on board. One of the things that would be helpful as we were developing that sample scope of work is what your outcomes, what are the deliverables that you would like to be provided by this consultant? And once we have that, we would set that up and we would workshop that during the work session. We would also, as a part of that work session, create evaluation criteria as well as a point system. And then, once you all have agreed upon the scope of work, evaluation criteria, as well as the score or the rubric that we would utilize, then that would go through our typical procurement process. I think one of the things from the last process that we learned is that there was some difficulty in terms of feelings around how open or not that process was. And if you look at four Js procurement process as it's set up, it's in alignment with the state of organs, procurement rules and policies and procedures. I think we have a great staff on hand that can walk it through. And we would still provide, as we had intended to the last time, a shortlist of vendors based on their ranking that you would have the opportunity to interview. That could, that interview could not just be question and answer, but also they could provide a sample, a mini training of sorts so that you have an idea of what the delivery style is, how they engage with the board, that kind of thing. And then based on that, we would take scoring from the board itself to add into the scoring that we have already done internally with staff to select the final vendor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? That sounds great. Thank you. Thank you. We will go ahead and.
Yeah, that sounds a whole lot more comprehensive. I appreciate the work you put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, the agenda is a letter of support for passage of HB twenty eight eighty-three. This is a first read. Judy is available if we have any questions for her.
Thank you.
And Kirthy as well, yes. So I know that we probably all looked this over. So anybody have questions or is there any additional information you want to share with us?
Just the reason it's in the packet separately is that this was not one of our exact identified priorities that we already had before the group.
Yeah, great. And it's given a timeline, but allows us to have the first and second reading. So this is also an example of what the process looks like. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on this proposed letter of support? Okay, in that case, we will take action on this at the March first meeting. Thank you. Next, we have suggestions by the board to considerations of items at a future meeting. Are there items the board would like to suggest to add to future meeting agendas? Gordon?
I'd like to add, probably as an item for information, first, consideration of the, making the book challenge AR into a policy and maybe information first because I'm not sure if we need all the details for AR or something, but broadly, I'd like to have the policy on that.
Do we have, have these two folks who are supporting that proposal with hand raises? Kirthy, I have two. Okay, that's three of us. We will bring that to leadership. Are there any other items? Kirthy?
I just wanted to, I guess, formally put it on there since we had the presentation on the integrated guidance process. So we had some information on the stakeholders and the needs assessment and stuff that went into that. So if we could get that in a, I know we're in a time crunch for that.
Is there, Judy, are you raising your hand to support that? And do we have another, Gordon as well? Okay, great. And we will also bring that to leadership, sorry, at the same time. Thank you. Are there any other items? Alicia?
Not sure it's for leadership. I'm just wondering if we can get a comprehensive list that, of everything that was listed at the end of meetings that's still out there. Like months and months ago, I talked about wanting to have a discussion about where we are with public safety officers and EPD with the schools. And, you know, it's been like five months. So I just wondered where we are and if it's on the agenda or also we put a few things on last week that I didn't see on this week. So that would be helpful. I don't know if you need hands or it's just a request.
Alicia, would it be okay with you if we included that in a Friday memo?
I fear it gets lost in the Friday memo because there are things that, like, you might forget mine and then I've got to talk to you. I mean, that'd be fine, but maybe we could just review it at some point at the end of a meeting, just so we can have that dynamic conversation and, and if it works, if it works. I'm sorry, Byah, would you say that again?
So maybe as an item for information?
Yeah, if possible, if you guys think that's where it belongs. Thanks.
Are there two hand raises to support that? Where's my hand? Okay. Are there any others? All right, I have one that I'll add. I would like to receive an update on the, of the PLA and the social studies curriculum that we adopted at the end of last year, just to find out where things are and just receive an update. Is there anyone that supports hearing about that? Okay, I see support from Michelle and Kirthy. Curriculum update.
Can I ask, is that, you're hoping to hear about that at a board meeting?
Well, I guess we'll decide that in leadership, whether it's in a board meeting or a Friday memo or a work session.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest the work session because that allows for a longer, more fluid conversation that I'm concerned by other items in the meeting.
Okay, well, when we go to leadership this week, I think it's Kirthy, I have. I'm not, I believe we can decide on scheduling as well as format. The board session does make sense. I'm not attached to the venue. Are there any other items? In that case, thank you to everyone. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for March first, twenty twenty-three. And this meeting is adjourned at ten oh six PM.
Thanks, everyone.